All right, good afternoon, everyone. It is 1:00 P. M. We have a few more colleagues that are coming in, but we'll go ahead and get started. We'll call the meeting to order at 1:00 P. M. Madam Clerk, will you please call it a roll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Mayor Pro Tem Middleton.
I'm here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Caballero.
On the way.
Councilmember Cook.
On the way.
Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Rist. Thank you.
Yeah. They're coming. All right, announcements. Councilmember Cook.
Good afternoon, everyone. I... I'm gonna be requesting a... An update for the following work session, so just wanted to state that. I don't know if you wanted to do it now, or if we wanted to do it during other matters at the end. I'll leave that up.
Is this around the funding? Okay, you can, you can just...
I might hold off on it, at least until our other council members are...
I don't think it's anything controversial. It's information, so you can request it. And, but the staff will take it from there.
Okay, great. So my request is going to be for a report on funding, either state or federal, around the ending the HIV epidemic. So that includes HOPWA, and then there's some other funds in there as well. Just a, a report about how those have been used, and sort of what agencies are involved in the distribution of those funds. So that is my request, if I have support from my colleagues.
I, I don't think, I don't think it's a big, I don't think it's a problem. We also kind of addressed it. We sort of talked about it on Monday night, but I don't, I mean, it's just information. Getting what funding we have coming in, right?
Yeah.
And how we're spending it, yeah.
Good. Okay, and then my...
HOPWA specifically on, is your request, right?
All of it.
Yes, I'm, I'm looking for any funding having to do with, that we get specifically having around HIV. Are you looking for...
No, I was just...
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think if we were to add any of the other pots of money in, it would be just a much bigger conversation. So that was HOPWA and, and other HIV-specific funding, state and federal. And then I also am gonna need to request a, an excused absence for our next council meeting on the third.
Okay. All right, you wanna go ahead and do that now, just? All right.
Sure.
I'm gonna make a motion to excuse absence.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All opposed? Good. Just to add to your request, I will say that Durham, we are a member of the African-American Mayors Association, and we received a, we received support and resources to look at a, a risk assessment as we're moving into the new presidential administration of what funding we have coming in from the federal government. This is not just specific, specific to any one particular area, but everything. So department heads have already been requested to provide what funding we're getting at the federal level, and just sort of assessing the risk on that, you know? How do we prepare? How do we maneuver? And how we can best navigate to additional funding? How we should make adjustments to funding we're currently getting? And if there are, if there's funding that we're getting on a recurring basis, then, you know, just looking at whether we're gonna keep getting it? How do we maneuver or adjust to keep getting it? Or if we're not gonna get it, how do we better position ourselves? So we're working with... So Durham is the model city. I'm working with a, a firm called Ice Miller in the African-American Mayors Association. So what that will do is it will provide the, the outline for an assessment that cities could take on. They can implement in their own cities to assess their risk levels, and then also how to generate recommendations on working with the new administration. Did I miss anything, Commissioner? So that, so Councilmember Cook, you'll get your report, but we just know that I'm, I'm engaging something that's gonna do the entire city, which will be really good for us. So, thank you.
Just may I have a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. First off, yeah, I have no issues with it whatsoever. I do want to just, just for... Just so I'm understanding, and we give each other great deference when it comes to putting issues on, on the work session, so, so, you know, I certainly honor that. But I do, is, is, would this be information that we have not, just for staff, have not already received in some form or fashion? Or is this something that is in regular course and in regular order, would, would normally come before us at, at an appointed time? Or is there something? And also, to Councilmember Cook, would this, is this just pure information? Or are you looking for some type of policy action on, on the behalf of the council subsequent to it? Is this something, in other words, is this something that's already readily available? And is there something that would have come before us in regular course? Anyway, that, that's for staff. And I guess that's also asking, are you clear on what you're being asked for?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So this is not an item that was scheduled to come forward a, as a business item. At, at this point, the, the use of these funds is generally, I imagine, set during the budget process, and then we may have occasional conversations in front of council. We would be responding to this in similar fashion to other requests that have been made from the dais and agreed to by members of council, like Division Zero update that is provided today. That would be how we would receive that. It is generally, though, our presumption that that comes with the endorsement of a majority of council members. So that, either a consensus or a nod of heads that, that represents the will of the council to bring a report forward, we, we will be happy to provide. I feel like that's at the discretion of the council.
Yeah, so my question wasn't to process or how we, how we executed. I'm actually talking about the substance of what will be coming before us. But you answered it, thank you. Absolutely, I look forward to the report, thank you.
Yeah.
And to answer your second question, there was not a policy request, it is just information. This does come before a citizens' council as well, but it does not come in a recording set, a recorded setting. And, and we are, Durham uses that funding actually for multiple counties as well, so I think it, it would be good to have that conversation.
Absolutely, I think it's timely, and I appreciate your, your requesting it, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you all, thanks for that. Councilmember Baker. Thank you.
Thank you, good afternoon, everyone. I just have a few announcements. I just wanted to thank all city workers with the winter storm. I know that many city workers don't get to stay home when it's cold, and so just want to thank everyone who's been working on our roads and, and keeping sidewalks clear. And I also wanted to shout out Michelle Cepedes Gomez, who was, who's here with us in the audience. She was our, the city's first language access coordinator. She's been with the city, I think, since 2020. And so I know she's moving on to another position, but I just wanted to say thank you to her and her service. And the city, just lifting up this work, is seen as a leader in the state now because of our language access work. The governor, Governor Cooper, now Governor Stein, are trying to create a language access plan for the entire state and all agencies, and the city of Durham has been active in that space, partly because of Michelle's leadership and our communications department broadly, so just wanted to say thank you. That is all.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I also wanna make sure to say thank you to all of our city employees, who have been hard at work making sure that our roads are safe and the trash is picked up. I also need to request an excused absence for the February 3 meeting as well. And I'm not sure if I need an excused absence for the legislative meeting, I think on the 30th? I'm not sure how that works, but...
No, you'll just miss the food?
It's okay, I'll be in New Orleans, I'll get good food.
Okay. You don't have the bread, you don't have the bread. Keep that to yourself, you know?
But I, I did also wanna just, I don't know if we should take it up in other matters, but I do wanna have a conversation about some of the town halls that need to come up in the next few months. I know that there've been some requests around housing and transportation again, and so I just wanna make sure that, um, figure out how to navigate that with all of us, so... I can leave that to other matters. Other than that, I, I do think, I know there's something else, but it'll come to me. That's all for now, thank you.
Thank you. Rist.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, again, wanted to shout out city staff for all the work they've been doing with these, these really cold temperatures on the roads, warming shelters, white flag nights, all this stuff. It's, it's, it's a cold time, it's dangerous times. I appreciate the staff and our partners who are doing the hard work at this time. Also, I want to say, hearts go out to the city of Raleigh. There's been two very high-profile homicides in the last couple of weeks, and so our hearts go out to the families involved, the, the folks in Raleigh, and also our colleagues, in fact, our new, new mayor in Raleigh, Mayor Janet Calhoun, who are all dealing with this, very tragic, and it's very upsetting. And again, hearts go out to them in Raleigh. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, honorable colleagues, everyone in chamber with us today, and those who may be, those who are watching on whatever platform may be watching. Thank you for being with us today. Let me echo my colleagues' commendations and appreciation to our staff, our first responders, those who are awake while we're sleeping, and out in the cold while we're warm, did a marvelous, as usual, marvelous job in not only preparing us for the weather, but in responding as well. So we are, we are always grateful. No announcements, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna, just as, as the elected leader in this city, reaffirm my personal commitment to the city's work on diversity, equity, and inclusion. I, I wanna reaffirm my personal commitment, as an elected leader to the city, to our language access program. The, the White House's Spanish website is now dark. Now, the websites have gone dark. We are a municipality, and, and while we give due deference what is due to the federal government, you know, we're a republic, so we, we believe in local control. So I just want to reaffirm our commitment to, to the values of our city and to our residents, many of them who are experiencing great anxiety today. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman.
I just wanna make sure you do get the excused absence.
I'm happy to make a motion.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all opposed?
Thank you.
All right. Is that the same meeting that you're gonna be missing as well? All right.
That's the, that's the third, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep, all right. I just wanna remind everyone, and I make sure I continue to invite folks to the state of the city, February 18. There is another event going on at Duke that I'm not sure if the embargo was released yet, so I'll hold off on announcing it. That is gonna be really good for the Durham community. And, yeah, I... I, sometimes I just love taking on adventures, so I rode my bike in the snow. I was safe.
I'm with you on that, I came into you on the snow.
It was, it was fun, and I was safe. But while I was riding around, and also while walking my dog, I saw our city workers just, like, it was like a rapid response mode, like, they are so good at what they do. And I just wanted to shout them out, 'cause it was extremely cold out there. And while the city was dark, and everyone is inside, they were out and about doing their thing. And I just really wanted to shout them out, and it's always cool to see them, like, hey, man, hey, what's going on, man? And they're out hard at it. So I thank you all, to our entire city forces out there doing those cold times. Again, just want to remind our parents that to please engage in our, you know, not only city website, but into, you know, just, just general community organizations that are youth-focused in our community. And reach out for help if you need help. If you are seeing a particular behavior that is not desirable to you, and your child, or your teenager, please, please do not wait until it's too late to say something. I, I keep saying, you know, we have to stop waiting 18 years to get involved with a child's life, 'cause when they get to a point where they're dead, then everyone wanna throw their hands up. And, and, and say, you know, we need to do this, we need to do that. So I employ our community to be more proactive in getting engaged. This is something that's personally passionate, that I'm personally passionate about. And I, I, I know I have a lot of folks reaching out to me right now about housing situations and trying to get out of leases and things. And I can't respond to everybody as fast as I need to or want to, but I am passing on those messages to the agencies. And I am working behind the scenes right now as aggressively as I can to ensure that our systems are working with one another within our public safety apparatus and with our housing providers. And this morning, Councilmember Caballero and I spent about an hour and a half or two on a call with the Triangle Apartment Association, just looking at ways that we could find out how we can better house folks. And, and, and that's with the challenges of the industry as well. So let's just make sure we are engaging as best as possible. I know also that there are some fears around immigration. I won't talk a lot about this publicly, 'cause I don't wanna put targets on anyone's back. I mentioned this on Monday, Tuesday night, but no, I'm not gonna hold a big town hall pulling folks together. I know I've been, there've been requests for that. I don't think that's the safest approach. But if you are in our immigrant, immigrant community, and you are really afraid right now, rightfully so, I would ask you to reach out to your council members and myself, and we can direct you to where some community conversations are happening. Obviously, Councilmember Caballero, this is something that is personally a lived experience, and she has a lot of knowledge around resources and conversations, so not to throw you, put you to work or whatever, but, yeah. But just, just, just know that there is, we're not quiet and not doing anything. But do know we have to be really strategic in how things happen. That being said, let's get to priority items. All right, Manager Ferguson.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council. The city manager's office does have several priority items. First, agenda item number eight, contract for site evaluation and identification for the Algo Flow Way project and presentation. There'll be a presentation made today during this January 23 city council work session. Agenda item number 14, a contract with Corporate FAX to reconcile community development block grants, CDBG, emergency solutions grant, ESG, housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, HOPWA allocations. A supplemental item was added to your packet and will be on the agenda today. An update on Vision Zero will be made during the January 23 work session. Supporting materials are attached under the priority items by the city manager, city attorney, and city clerk section of your agenda. My recommendation, Mayor, is to receive that presentation at, at the end of today's presentations. And then, not in my memo, but I did want to announce to council that at our next work session on February 6, myself and deputy city manager, Wim Bush, will both be at the North Carolina City County Management Association. Deputy city manager Chadwell will be staffing the meeting on behalf of the manager's office. Those are my priority items.
Thank you. I'll, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, move to, please, Mayor. Move to, please, Mayor.
Can we give a second?
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and properly seconded to a separate city manager's priority items. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. All right, Madam Attorney.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. The city attorney's office has no priority items today.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and city council members, the same for the city clerk's office, no items.
Pardon me, pardon me. Actually, I have the Boarding Committee report, and all of the nominations are in. The Workers' Rights Commission appointment, Conlon, Fennerdy, Italo, Medellas, and Elizabeth Reinstein have been nominated. And for the Housing Appeals Board, Taisha Wymore has also been nominated, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you. All right. All right, I'll now address the consent agenda. Number one, Durham worker's rights commission appointments. Number two, Housing Appeals Board appointment. Number three, approval of the city council minutes. Number four, Audit Services Oversight Committee, ASOC, calendar year 2024, a year report. Number five, First Amendment to the interlocal cooperation agreement between the city of Durham and the county of Durham's Contract of Joint Communications Plan. Glad to see that. Number six, fiscal year 2025, capital improvement plan, project closeout. Number seven, amendments to the city of Durham Police and Fire Conversation Plans. Number eight...
Just wanna, just wanna say, it's great, it looks great.
Yes, indeed.
Excited.
Number eight, contract for site evaluation and identification for the Legal Flow Way project and presentation. Number nine, closing the American Rescue Plan Act funding for the Western Intake Partnership projects. Number 10, participatory budgeting cycle for launch update. Number 11, zoning map change, picket apartments. 12, consolidated annexation, 2613, Covington Road. 13, consolidated annexation, Mariah Ridge. And number 14, contract with Corporate FAX, FACS, to reconcile community development block grants, CDBG, emergency solutions grant, ESG, housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, HOPWA allocations.
And I'll be pulling number 14.
All right.
Councilmember Cook, did I hear you as well?
Yep. 14, just 14, right? All right. So that is our consent agenda, with, with the exception of item number 14 being pulled. At this time, I will go to our citizen matters. First person I have is Mary Molina. And after Mary Molina, Ken Pugh.
Hi, I'm Mary Molina. My address is on file. I have a few comments to make, given the current situation in Durham. This is called "We Are the Homeless." I lost my apartment. I lost my job. I lost my house to the bank. I lost my husband. I lost my wife. My parents disowned me. I lost my health to drugs, to depression, to PTSD, to sudden illness. I'm a veteran. I'm a runaway. I'm an addict. I'm a victim of domestic violence. I'm an old schoolmate you danced with at prom. I just got out of jail. I just got out of rehab, out of a mental facility, off suicide watch. I was your neighbor, and you knew me. My kids went to school with yours. I used to work for you in your office, in your restaurant, in your school, in your yard. I'm homeless, not worthless. Our parents taught us the same lessons about justice and charity. Judge not, lest ye be judged. Do unto others, and love thy neighbor. I'm homeless. Can you see me now?
Thank you. Ken Pugh, Pugh? Welcome. And if you don't mind pronouncing your name...
Pugh.
Wanna make sure I'm, Pugh?
Pugh.
Okay.
Like in a church.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Ken Pugh, address on file. I'd like to thank you for your renewed commitment I've heard several council members make over the past year to the urban growth boundary through the UDO rewrite process. I recognize you've had to make some tough decisions to honor that boundary, which promotes the goals of density and infill, reduced infrastructure costs, and enhanced transit access. You've probably heard of the broken window syndrome. An abandoned building that may go unscathed, sullen until that first window is broken, and then all the remaining windows quickly become broken as well. The first development that punches through the urban growth boundary is like that first broken window. Others will soon follow. Let us honor the vision for growth that prioritizes thoughtful planning for the benefit of current and future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Luisa Siple, former council member. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Council. I've been outside of the library this morning for hours, waiting for it to open. It apparently was a three-hour delay back. It's continued, and people are in the cold, people who have to leave the shelter at 9. We're not able to get into the library or a warming space until noon. And I would like us to try to be more careful of people who are homeless, and I know there's lots going on with the, with the snowstorm, but it was, you know, possible for me to drive around and check on homeless people, and I would hope that the city and county would do more to protect our, our people. And, and I hope with some of the funds that we do receive from HUD, if we do get some funds for people to get housing, this is what people want. They don't want to be homeless, they don't want to be out in the cold. But it's, it's very difficult in Durham to find a place to live affordably on a social security or a disability check. So I would ask you, as you go through your budget, to do as much as you possibly can to make sure that our people are, are safe and warm this winter. Thank you.
Thank you. Angela Vic-Louis? Angie? Hello, good to see you again.
Angela Vic-Louis. 4215 Davenport Avenue, apartment 4D, Durham, North Carolina. And I come to all of you guys, I did, Your Honor, and all of you out here. And my topic is with touches home with me, homelessness. You'll know me that from out there. That's one I always talked about. I'm lived experience from being here, and I can say that from starting in 2003 in Washington, DC, where I'm from, at Mitch Snyder, it's a difference from here as far as housing or helping the homeless, heat-wise. I've been on the board of HZAC, been on a couple of other boards, as far as helping the homeless out here. I come to you all and everyone out here to help these people that are out in the street when it's this cold weather right now. Larissa and I have been, for the last couple of years, continuously, hot or cold, helping. Last week, to see elderly people, elderly man in a wheelchair with a little jacket on, no gloves, no hats, nothing, and nowhere to go. Not to live, I'm not asking y'all to lift him in a home, but somewhere, like, all these empty buildings, open them up. Some of them have somewhere to stay warm, if not but a couple hours during the day before they can find shelter at night. If I opened up my yard, I would open it up, point blank. These people need help before we be having bodies instead of bodies that be taken care of. So I just ask each and every, I challenge you, stand out there in that cold for about three hours with no gloves, no hat, no nothing. And then maybe you could see how some of them, because homelessness comes in all kind of categories out there in that street. You can pick and choose which one that you could put on each person. But no one, no one needs to be found frozen because of nowhere to go in this city with all these buildings coming up. Thank y'all.
Thank you so much. Lastly, I have Mr. Dennis Garrett.
So what I wanna do is, I wanna talk about this violence that's going on. I mean, we are, I commend y'all for all you're doing. And also, I'd like to say to Mr. Ferguson, welcome to Durham, welcome back to Durham. And however, I wanna say to you, I truly understand the past, but I'd like for the principle to go ahead, or the personality, right? Thank you for what you've done. Lack of knowledge had me saying and doing some things in the past. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say in public, I apologize. Right, but what I wanna talk about right now is that this violence is going on, to stop the violence. I don't know what y'all movement is, or what's next for y'all to do, but I wanna be included. Like, I ain't up here to ask you for no money, I'm actually, I'm up here to ask you for what assistance I can give you to help stop this violence. You know, what can we do as a unit to make sure that these kids? Like, I got kids coming to me, all they wanna do is to be able to go in... Like, I got kids coming to me, all they want to do is to be able to go on the other side of town without wearing a hoodie. You know, like, they just want to be able to go to the grocery store. Like, what can we do? Like, all the buildings y'all building, that's a great thing, because we growing in Durham. You know, I'm born and bred in Durham. Angie Avenue, that's where I'm from. You know, the, 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 the regenification is noticed. You know, they went from building eight thousand dollar houses to seven hundred thousand dollar homes. That's cool. But who gonna live in them? Or those that live in them, all you gonna do is give the population that I'm talking about a bigger target to shoot for, because man, if you ain't eating, you ain't eating. So the violence gonna come to your neighborhood. So I'm asking you, what can I do? You know, I want to introduce myself to some and reintroduce myself to others. Like, I'm here to help Durham. You know, East Durham, South Side, I go any side of Durham, it don't matter. You know, I ain't trying to claim a set, I'm trying to save a life. Right, we talking about things that matter, everything y'all saying that matters. But none of that matters if we don't save the life. So I'm asking every one of y'all, I'ma leave these cards up here, if it don't matter, leave them up there, throw them away, it don't matter. But if you care about, care about these kids that's not going to school, these kids who their mama smoking crack, their daddy in jail, they ain't got nobody to answer to except those that's giving them something, let's give them an outlet. I'm here to ask you, what can I do to save these children's lives? And if you concerned the way I'm concerned, one of y'all call me. Thank you, Mayor, for all you do. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, when you call me. Thank you, uh, DJ, Your Honor. You know, and, and I really want to say thank you. You are making a major difference. So I, I, I ploy, Mr. Ferguson, and, and the work that you're doing. I know that y'all come together and make a better Durham, but I'm here to be in the middle. Like, let me be the translator from the streets to the county commissioners. Thank y'all for y'all time.
Thank you. All right, uh, we'll go ahead and um, let's just knock out number 14 and then we can just do our presentations. This, item number 14 was pulled by uh, Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Cook.
I'll yield to Councilmember Cook for her questions oftentimes, usually anticipate whatever's gonna ask anyways.
Uh, good afternoon. I'm, I was actually just gonna start by, this was added relatively late to our agenda. So if you could just give us a brief synopsis so that folks listening at home know what we're talking about, because I think we've been hearing quite a bit about some of these vouchers, but this is a, a bit of a different piece of it. So I was hoping you could just give us a, a brief summary and then I'll have some specific questions as well.
Oh, I'll be glad to, Councilmember Reginald J. Johnson, Director, Community Development Department for the City of Durham. Uh, the purpose of this item is to engage firm corporate facts uh, to me, to help us with some reconciliation of three of our entitlements. Uh, emergency solutions grants, the uh, Hopewa Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, as well as Community Development Block Grant. The home funds, which is actually part of our entitlement, has already been reconciled. Uh, we did that uh, la- last, concluded that last year. The purpose of this is to uh, ensure that the balances are exact, it requires a certain degree of precision between the I D I S, which is the, as I've shared with before you, the federal checkbook, and our uh, general ledger, the city's checkbook. So it's more uh, in some respects, technical and in the weeds, but the balances do have to be precise. Uh, we uh, need to have uh, some more uh, reconciliation to make sure those are, are exact. And so that's the purpose of this uh, this contract in summary.
Um, so I have a couple of questions about the contract, I guess. Corporate FACS, is this an, an organization that we have worked with before? Is this, I know that sometimes the federal government has contractors that they recommend. Is that how we found them or have we worked with them in the past? Do we have other contracts ongoing with them?
Actually, it's both. We have, I work with, number one, we have worked with them in the past. As I mentioned, uh, it's mentioned in the memo and I've shared it before, they have uh, worked with us to reconcile our home balances, uh, which was part of the uh, eight million dollars that we used with the uh, the Durham Housing Authority project and also provide a consultation in, in that regard. We have used them probably about four years ago uh, with uh, issues related to uh, some assistance with our talent, that was paid for by HUD. So it's actually been both of the examples that you shared.
And forgive me if I'm misremembering, but are there, is there part of these grants that do go to the process of, of reconciliation? Do we, when we get funding by, from HUD for these grants, is part of it for administrative work?
So if I understand your question, uh, some of the grants do have administrative portion that we use to defray salary cost.
Okay, that was gonna be my question. So all of that is, all of that administrative costs or administrative part of that budget we have utilized for our staffing, is that correct?
That's correct, that's correct. And some other minor, other, other administrative expenses, but those are relatively minor.
And and sorry, can you tell me one more time? Because I, I know I've read this, but it's last minute. Um, the ones, the ones that we are looking for assistance in reconciling are C D B G, Papua.
And E S G, Emergency Solutions Grants.
And what was it about those three? Or why was it these three that, that didn't, we don't feel like we can meet the deadline in February?
Well, one of the, we did uh, reconcile home, so that's the reason, they're, they're four programs and we've already done home. Uh, it took quite a bit of time for us to do that. We've actually uh, been working on it internally ourselves, but we need to have some more expertise, uh, particularly as it relates to the technical uh, regulations aspect. There are two parts to it. One is, of course, accounting. Uh, but the other is, that sits on the same plane, is uh, making sure that all of the rules are adhered to with the I D I S and how uh, uh, programs are entered into the I D I S system for the start. The federal, that's the federal checkbook.
But we've used the system, the I D I S system is the same that we've used every year for reconciliations.
Yes, it is.
Okay. And have we in the past needed to contract out for um, any of the four of those grants?
Um, I'm trying to remember, we've gotten assistance with I D I S in terms of the work that we've done, that has happened before. So that is not new. Uh, but I don't think we contracted by grant. I'm looking at, to my assistant directors. Okay, no, we haven't done it by grant.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions for now, but I might have some more.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Reginald, good to see you. Um, so just, just a, a couple of questions about our um, internal bandwidth and capabilities. The E S G, um, and Hopewa and C D B G are, these aren't ad hoc things. This has been kind of bread and butter for us for many years. I mean, I've been looking at these, these funding sources coming to us from the feds for many years. Um, so I guess my question is, what, what is? My assumption is that we would have somebody internal, we would already have the capacity to make sure we're compliant when it comes to federal funding. Uh, we know that federal funding comes with a lot of strings attached. So, so I guess my question is, how, how did we get here? And do we need to make sure that we have the expertise or a person internally? Since this is, this is an ad hoc money, we're always dealing with these funding sources. Rather than shopping on a hundred grand for, for consulting, do we need to do something to make sure that we have the internal capabilities to, to reconcile balances with these federal funds that we're constantly going after?
So I would say, answer your question, it's a good question, Councilmember. Um, one of the things that I would share is that all of that in terms of uh, training and staffing are needed. But one of the challenges, if you remember, I did have a high vacancy rate, particularly uh, during COVID in terms of staffing. The two major divisions that uh, helped with this or had high vacancies during uh, during COVID and just, just before going into COVID. And so we've been able to fill those and that's one of the reasons that this is coming up. It's because then we have the firepower, electrical, uh, intellectual firepower, if you will. And we can recognize the, the issues that we need to uh, recognize and be able to focus in on them. What that does not speak to is this all of the intense work with the other priorities that we need to uh, follow to be able to uh, basically right the ship at one time. And so, once we get it right and we have our standard operating procedures and we have the people in place, which we uh, we do now, but this is a recent uh, recent phenomenon, I guess you'd say, uh, then we'll be able to go uh, go forth uh, continuously.
Thank you, appreciate you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and, and thanks, Councilmember Cook and Mayor Pro Tem. I think you anticipated a lot of my questions here. Thanks, Mr. Johnson, I appreciate you being on the ball and sort of quickly moving to make sure we do hit this deadline, I guess, in February or whatever, to make sure HUD gets the needed, needed reports. Um, I guess my question is simply, so, so where do we get the hundred thousand dollars from? How do we, how do we find that money to pay for these consultants?
So we have used a, a, a operating budget, the city community developments operating budget, where we have uh, funding for special contractual services. Uh, we do keep um, money available for things such as this. One of the challenges of engaging in federal funds is that you do run the risk of things happening that you need some uh, consultants. And so, we do uh, keep money uh, for, for this, so it's used our operating budget.
And then just to go back to uh, Mayor Pro Tem's comment, so, so you're confident that going forward next year, that you have the capacity in place? You got the people and the training needed so that we don't have to, so we can avoid this kind of expense in, in coming years?
Yes, I'm not, um, I, I don't think that we necessarily need more people. Of course, we need um, some more training. But once we can write it, then we'll be able to uh, keep going forward.
Colleagues, any other questions? Go ahead. All right. Any other comments, questions? All right. So that is item number 14.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Johnson. All right, so we'll go ahead and I go to our um, presentations. Item number eight, Contract for Site Evaluation and Identification for Algal Flowway Project and Presentation. Is this uh, monitor working in front of us at all? I could also not be lazy and follow along on my iPad. Yeah. No biggie, we don't have to hold it up. If you've figured it out, that's fine, but follow along on the iPad.
Okay. All right. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor Williams, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, members of council, and Manager Ferguson, John Baker with the Public Works Department. Um, also here with uh, staff from Gradient, which is a consultant that we've selected for this uh, contract. Um, so I'm here today to, to talk about the, the Algal Flowway Project, a contract that we have for the Algal Flowway Project. This is a, an innovative project that we've been working on for many years in Public Works. And uh, it is a, a project that will help the city comply with state regulatory requirements in a, in a cost-effective manner. So I'll talk about the, what an Algal Flowway is, how it works, why we were searching for a site uh, to build one. Um, and then I'll, I'll go into the, the, the proposed contract uh, that we bring into you today, the uh, scope of work and uh, the proposed budget and, and schedule. Okay, so an Algal Flowway is an engineered treatment system that uses algae to remove excess nutrients from water. And the, the image on the left here uh, is, I guess behind you now, is a, a, a schematic of a, of what an Algal Flowway looks like. So basically, the water is pumped from a river or a lake. It's sent across this large pad, which is called the Flowway. Algae grows, it, it removes the nitrogen and phosphorus, the nutrients in the water. And then the cleaner water is returned back to the same water body further downstream. Algal flowways can vary in size, uh, depending on how much water needs to be treated. Uh, the, the photo on the right is, is a full-scale Algal Flowway that's in Florida. Um, it's approximately four acres in size, it's about five hundred feet long. And it can treat up to ten million gallons of water per day. So I'll go into a little bit more about how this works. Uh, as I mentioned, we, uh, water is pumped from a river or stream or lake and it's distributed across the Flowway through this row of pipes at one end. And then naturally occurring algae um, in the water will grow on the, the Flowway, the pad. And in the second photo, you can see uh, this dense mat of algae that gets established and it absorbs the excess nutrients in the water and that's how it gets removed. To continue this process of algal growth and nutrient removal, the algae actually has to be removed every one to two weeks. And so they do that by essentially driving a tractor with a plow over the Flowway and it scrapes it off. It gets directed to this flume and then a screen and a rake pulls it off the Flowway. And then it gets set aside in piles to dry out. And then lastly, um, it can be turned into compost, um, put into potting soil mixture, reused in some way. It can also, it would also, uh, could also be disposed of in a landfill. However, the city would prefer to, to reuse this, of course. Um, so this is the continual process that happens um, on the system. So we, we are seeking to build an Algal Flowway because uh, we think it is a time and cost-effective way to uh, comply with the, the state Falls Lake nutrient management strategy, also known as the Falls Lake Rules. Um, as you know, the Falls Lake Rules are gonna be very costly for, for the city. And so we've been looking at uh, the Algal Flowway technology since about twenty thirteen. And through feasibility studies and, and pilot study, we've determined this, uh, an Algal Flowway to be more time and cost-effective than uh, common stormwater control measures or S C Ms. And so, uh, because if we build one Flowway um, and versus many S C Ms to remove the same amount of nutrients, um, we can save the city on millions of dollars on uh, construction and design costs. Uh, we can save staff time uh, and consulting costs on managing, um, we won't have to manage as many projects and properties. And also, this would lead to shorter time to comply with the Falls Lake Rules. The contract that we are bringing to council is a professional services contract to search for um, and identify a suitable site for an Algal Flowway within Durham County and the Falls Lake watershed. Um, so we're only looking within the city and county limits uh, for properties. The consultant would be uh, performing tasks such as uh, leading uh, public outreach and communicate, uh, community engagement tasks such as, you know, uh, developing press releases and fact sheets, leading um, public information meetings for residents uh, and, and getting feedback from residents. Also communicating with landowners and neighbors, uh, where we would do, be doing the site search. So they would do a detailed site search with G I S mapping and using a lot of different criteria. do a detailed site search with GIS mapping and using a lot of different criteria, a lot of different data, such as stream water quality data, stream flow data, and then narrow in on a site. And then they would do more field assessment of environmental conditions, engineering considerations such as stream buffers and wetlands, where the Algal Flowway would be sited, and where, you know, the intake pipe would be and those kinds of things. They're also going to do an estimated construction costs for the site and a schedule for the future design and permitting and construction of an Algal Flowway at that site. And we have three optional tasks in the budget. One is a 30% site plan, so this would aid the city with those future design permitting and construction phases. If there's enough space on the site, then they could evaluate for solar power. And then, let's say that we do not find one large site for a four-acre Algal Flowway, but maybe we find two smaller sites for two smaller Algal Flowways, we have this additional site evaluation task, which would allow us to look at two sites versus one. And then the final report would summarize all these tasks and the methods and calculations and And this is the proposed project schedule and budget. The optional tasks are accounted for in the schedule and the budget. And I just wanted to point out that the additional site evaluation task would add about $320,000 to the contract amount. And the difference between the total cost with and without the optional tasks is about $420,000. And so, you can see that the total cost there is $1,232,322, and that includes the optional tasks and 15% in contract contingencies. All right, thank you for your time. I know that was a lot of information, but I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, colleagues. Councilmember Cook?
Thank you. That was a great presentation. I have not been around for the kind of buildup for this, so it's very exciting to learn about. And so, I just had a couple of quick questions. I think for me, when I hear about these projects that feel like so awesome, I'm always in the back of my head, like worried about any sort of potential negative impacts. And I'm particularly thinking about that in terms of environmental justice concerns, right? Because in the past, I feel like we've always had these innovative solutions. We've done some like preliminary community engagement, we've talked to people about what's going in there, and then we end up with a dump that is the second largest methane gas producer in the world, in the country. So, I'm particularly just worried about any potential sense or any potential, I mean, it's naturally occurring algae, so I assume that we aren't looking at a large potential for, I don't know, any sort of things coming out of the water that would potentially come through the ground, or any smells through the air, anything like that. But I'm just wondering if there's anything that I would be missing or I should be thinking about in terms of the impact of where this might go in. Does that make sense?
Sure thing, yeah. You know, some of the questions and concerns that have been raised, you know, about this in previous phases of this project have been, you know, what is the odor, what is the noise, nuisances? And I can, so I can speak from just actually my own experience. I was able to go down to Florida and visit, this is one of the Flowways that I visited. They have two in Vero Beach, Indian River County, Florida. And so, I was able to see it. I did see it in the wintertime, but there, to me, there was not considered like a nuisance odor. The algae does smell like, you know, we can keep it on the site to compost it there, or it can be removed right away. When it's drier, it's less heavy, and so it's easier to move it. But the staff in Florida have said that, you know, it sounds like, it smells sort of like organic material, but it doesn't travel very far. So, they don't have any complaints from neighbors. Their neighbors are not right next to it, so there are residential areas, but they're not right next to it. But I did not smell any bad or foul odors there. There's no issues with mosquitoes. You know, some of the piles could have maybe some flies around them because it is organic material. But the goal would be to turn these piles, you know, into composts and move them off the site. Obviously, this is a continuous process, though. Those are some of the main concerns that we've heard before. There are a lot of other benefits to it, like it actually will improve dissolved oxygen, it'll also remove sediment or suspended sediment in the water because it gets trapped in that algal mat. Yeah, those are some of the, I think, bigger concerns. Obviously, the size, we need a large size for it. But we could, you know, in Florida, they had a lot of tree buffer vegetation from the road. I couldn't see it from the street. And they've also added other amenities to it, like trails and that kind of things.
Yeah, I mean, it does sound like something that could potentially like be a nice usable space in addition to serving a purpose, which would be great.
Yeah, I guess the other, only other thing would be the truck, you know, trucks coming on and off the site to pick up and transport the dried algae or the composted algae. And that, you know, that estimate that we've gotten from previous contracts. A 10 MGD facility would produce 21 to 28 truckloads of material per year, which averages to about one to two truckloads every two weeks. But that would probably be less visits. You know, they could combine the visits because of the algal, depends on the composting process.
And then I saw that the scheduled, in the project schedule, we talk about the public outreach and community engagement pretty early on.
Yes.
And that would be prior to selecting a site. Will there be continued community engagement throughout the process once the site is identified? Because I just want to make sure that particularly folks who are going to be neighboring understand what's coming in.
Yes, yeah. The community engagement will be through the whole life of this contract. And we have, after a site is selected, we have a, you know, a public information meeting planned, and then we have, we've built in to have one to two additional meetings if more feedback or answers are needed for the public.
And my final question is that you might have said this already. Is this request in FY 25, '26 budget, is this coming before us this year? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. I figured it just wasn't, I didn't say that. Those are all my questions. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm just going to come around.
I'll be quick because I think the externalities of the site were my main source of interest. I'm curious about this. It's slightly industrial, it's slightly an amenity kind of space, so in whatever way it's possible to amenitize it, I think that would be something that I would be interested in. And it seems like, I mean, you visited, this is the one in Vero Beach?
This is one of the two, yeah, they're close by, sorry.
Okay. Would you say this is kind of one of the better, one of the Cadillac version, sort of versions of this facility?
I mean, this is the only one I've been to, but it is a very nice facility. So, I haven't seen many others, so it's hard for me to say about that.
Well, I was just curious, are there, what other, what other facilities are there like this in North Carolina?
To my knowledge, there are no other Algal Flowways in North Carolina. There are some other smaller scale pilot studies that have been run and tested in north of here, in Virginia, in the Chesapeake Bay watershed, Baltimore. There's been some, they've been studying it up there as well, even as far north as New York, there's been some pilot studies. But full-scale ones have been mainly in Florida, to my knowledge, yeah.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate you giving this presentation. I think I'm glad that there aren't, there don't appear to be enormous negative externalities that come from something like this. And any possibility that there is to create an amenity out of it, I think that that would be beneficial. So, thank you.
Great, thank you, counselor.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. We did a pilot of this before, right? Because we've gotten a presentation about this.
Yes.
Probably three or four years ago now.
The, the previous contract was actually a site search, and so we're coming back around to try to find another, well, to find a site again.
Okay.
But before that was the pilot study.
Right. I remember when this initially came to council, and it was pretty kind of, oh, this is cool.
Yeah.
So, I had a moment of, you know, Groundhog Day. So, I think this is really great. I'd like to hear a little bit more about the solar opportunities. Like I saw it in the more kind of more expensive, but probably still worth it. So, that's just a question I had.
Yeah, we left that as an optional task. Just, there's so much uncertainty with the final site that we will find, so it depends on the space for solar panels. But it's something we're interested in exploring if it's feasible.
Thank you. I just want to say, as one council member, that is actually really important to me. I think one of the big successes of our water management facility is that it is geothermal, and we put it all in there. And, you know, the movement on our fire stations just having, you know, standardized solar panels on top, I think it meets our goals as a city on energy usage. I just want to say, I know that that's an optional task, and I know it's site-specific, but it is an important one for me as an individual council member. That's about it. I think this is great. I think it, I know that, I see Michelle back there. I know you all have been working, I used to be the UNRBA liaison a few years ago, and so I know how important this work is. I know we do really incredible water work in general as a city, and I think the fact that there isn't another one of these in North Carolina is a testament to that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just continue those accolades as well. I just had a couple questions, just on the side of, is there a reason why it's a larger site as opposed to like smaller multi-sites? Is that more beneficial? And has that been explored at all?
It's more cost-effective to build a larger site like this. You get more nutrient removal, dollars per pounds nutrient removed. We are trying, this time around, we are thinking about, if we cannot find the perfect site, then we would look at two smaller sites, for example, a 3 million gallon per day facility would be about a little over an acre in size, the pad, the Flowway footprint.
And I think the one that we did see previously was like a longer strip, or a lot of strips, as opposed to like a large.
Yeah, the pilot, the pilot was, basically, it was one sliver of this large Flowway, so it was one foot wide by.
And I would say that I think that might be a way to move forward. I'm just one person, but I'm just trying to figure out and explore, because I want to say that this is like almost too good to be true, because we're talking about going from like nine million to one. It just feels like, just while we're talking about it, acknowledging that we're cost-cutting a lot, there may be some other ways to think about it that are multi-site, so that it's not all in one area.
Right.
Because that's where the environmental, like injustice occurs. It's like you just dump it all in one neighborhood.
Right.
So, there's ways to spread it out because it is a necessary need, so that it's kind of weighted across our community. I think that would be helpful. And then I would also concur with Cabeiro, a customer of Cabeiro's point about solar. That is a great way to offset our carbon footprint. And so, if there's any ways to do that, and I would also contend, if there's any way to combine it with some of the search sites, I guess, or renewed sites for our fire department. I know that the need for new fire, you know, stations is on the rise, and if there are some that could come into this, because you were doing a smaller site or what have you, I think that should also be something that we're exploring. Those are just a few thoughts.
Are you meaning adding, adding something like this to a new fire station site? Okay.
I mean, it hasn't been done. It hasn't been done, and because we're doing it first, it doesn't mean we need to do it exactly as they did in Vero, Florida.
Right.
We need to think about what we need and how we would want to do that here.
Thank you for those comments.
Also, one additional thing, I was just, and I didn't want to throw it out, but I do think it's important to note, with the Duke Diet and Fitness Center site being as large as it is, is that large enough for something like this?
Yeah, like I said, it's sizable, so something like that potentially could be large enough. I'd have to defer to the engineers that designed.
It may not be in the right Flowway.
But, I mean, that, yeah. You're talking about a site like that?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then also to Councilmember Baker's point about the amenities, just kind of keeping that Duke Diet Fitness amenity site in mind.
Correct.
Smaller, more parkage, like.
Yeah, the, one of the sites in Florida has, this flows into like a stream restoration, wetland restoration that has trails, which is very nice.
Ms. Mayor, yeah, appreciate the question from my colleagues. Thanks for the presentation. I love the innovative idea, though I do have a little bit of, like, Councilmember Cook and others, a little bit of like, whoa, this sounds like, sounds like we all remember Jordan Lake and the, what were they, the solar bees that were a complete disaster, right? So, like, but this sounds like a little bit more sound idea. I wonder, just to start with, I wonder if you could, because I am also the UNRBA representative right now, as you probably know.
Right.
So, I wonder if you, just for the record, state, I know that we are currently in the, we're in the Phase One rules, right? We're getting it ready to go to Phase Two, which would require even increased nutrient reduction, right? Can you just, just for the council and for the record, identify what that cost would be, given where it looks like Phase Two would go, what the cost of the city of Durham would be to meet those Phase Two rules?
I'm looking over at Michelle because she's.
She knows all this stuff.
Do you know the actual cost?
Man, I know it's substantial, so I just want to make sure, for the record. And Michelle.
John is great. Michelle Wolfhook with Public Works Department, Water Quality Manager. So, we haven't done another cost estimate for Stage Two since Stage Two was adopted. And at the time it was adopted, both Public Works and Water Management came to council and gave estimates of what we thought the rules were going to cost at that time. That would have been 2010. So, long time, a lot of inflation since then. At that time.
Least a billion, right? We're, yeah.
I'm sorry?
Least a billion, right?
It was, it was a billion apiece. So, it was about a billion for Water Management, and our estimate for stormwater was about 800,000. That was based on the knowledge that we had at the time, and we also recognized that that would not have gotten us to the reductions that were required. So, it would have gotten us a long way, but not to where we were supposed to get.
Thank you, appreciate that, yeah. Yeah. Right, as we, as you know, so we're going through this sort of, we're trying to redo the rules in Phase Two, and part of it is to go more towards this investment-type approach. And using innovative ideas like this, as opposed to simply trying to reduce more in ways that may not improve lake quality, right? So, I really appreciate that. So, my next question is, so how do we pay for this 1.2 million in the current budget?
This is as part of our capital improvement program, so it is.
It's in the CIP.
It is in the CIP, yeah.
That's great. And then, so for these pilots you talked about, I appreciate the questions from Councilmember Baker. So, it sounds like there, Vero Beach is one, maybe in Virginia. Has this been commonly used in cities and communities across the country? Or is this a pretty, still pretty new? Or is this a pretty, still pretty new and innovative idea, the idea of an algal flowway?
I would say it's still new and innovative. Again, the, the full-scale sized ones that I know of are in Florida. And there are smaller, smaller scale ones in, that have either been shorter term or have been used for research purposes. They're in Virginia, Baltimore, some other places. I wrote down.
That's fine. And so I got, yeah, so I guess I wonder, so from these pilots, so what have we learned from the pilots? Have they shown substantial value in these kind of flowways? What do we, what do we know?
Yeah, and we also did a pilot too. And so we, that's, we've learned a lot from that, that pilot study. So I can, I could speak to that one. I can't speak to the, the efficacy of those other studies. But from, for ours, there's a lot of numbers here. Okay, so the, the total, this was for a, a year. It was run for a year. The total flow volume was 12.6 million gallons over that year. The detention time is about 10, 10 to 12 minutes. And we removed 727 pounds of algae biomass, which was 9.52 pounds of nitrogen and 1.31 pounds of phosphorus. Now, the nutrient removal was, sorry. It was 12% annually is what it was estimated, 12% removal in nitrogen. So it was about, and then during the warmer months, it was higher, 23% removal of nitrogen.
23% of, of what? Of, of total nitrogen in the lake? Or what would come from Durham? Or what's the, what is that?
That was, that, that was what was removed. So they monitored the inflow and the outflow of that pilot. And so it was the milligrams per liter of, of nitrogen.
Of the 12.6 million gallons that came in?
Yeah, that was the average, yes.
And do you have a sense of what that, what that, because the, obviously Falls Lake's large, right? So what would that, how does that translate into sort of nutrient reduction in Falls Lake? Is that sort of like a microscopic? Or does that make a, does that make a significant dent in Falls Lake?
It, it would make a big dent in the amount that the city would be required to remove as far as.
Other than the new rules, yeah.
Yeah, so for example, the estimates from, from the pilot study. Let's see, I don't have this. Okay, so they, they did, they did estimates with our, our previous site selection process. And the, the nutrient reduction range was 3,000 to 6,000 pounds of nitrogen. Depends on a lot of factors, temperature, flow, those kinds of things. The, the nutrient content in the water. The phosphorus reduction range was 508 to 656 pounds per year. And obviously we get more removal during the warmer months, because you have more algal growth and less removal during the, the cold winter months, because the algae, algae are not growing as fast.
And again, so what's that as a percentage of our expected nitrogen or nutrient reduction targets for those two nutrients?
Yeah, so. The, let's see, the City of Durham. So this is as of 2018. Our removal requirements was 2,859 pounds of nitrogen and 297 pounds of phosphorus per year. So either this would be, in a, in a very effective year, it could be helping us comply with those.
Would help us meet those goals?
Yes.
The whole goal, yeah.
Right.
That's great. Thank you. And then my last question is, so just to compare this to Vero Beach again. So, so in Vero, they're, they're taking water out of, is this a lake on the western side of Vero? Or is this sort of more closer to the coast? Like what's the, what's the body of water they're working with?
Good question. It's actually a canal. You know, they have a lot of canals down there. So it's a, a canal that's very nearby. I don't remember how far they have to pump. They actually have a submersible pump in the canal or adjacent to the canal. And that's the, that's the source water.
Right, so presumably they're, and that's a four-acre site in Vero, right? The one we're looking at?
Yeah, this one, this one is actually also pulling water from a, a, a brine, reverse osmosis brine facility. So it's some water from there, but it's, it's also canal water, yeah.
So it's, it's a much smaller body of water, I guess, than, than Falls Lake, with, that they're, that they're drawing from, right?
That's correct, yeah. And, and with this site search, we would be looking at the, the streams, rivers, and like around our reservoirs. So Little River Reservoir, Lake Mickey, we would not be pulling water directly from Falls Lake.
So it would be either, either Little River or Lake Mickey is what you're looking at?
Those are, those are areas, so anywhere north of, well, in, within the Falls Lake watershed, in Durham County, in the city and.
But it all would, it all would meet the Falls Lake rules, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you colleagues for some, some excellent engagement and questions. So this isn't a commitment to build.
Correct.
This is a, this is a find, find a spot. And, and I'm glad that, I mean, the public outreach and engagement. And there, there will be an, an environmental assessment and engineering analysis that will have the ability to sink our teeth into. It may not be next to anybody. We don't know where this is going to be, which, which leads me to some, some questions about the scope of work. My, my assumption is that the, our already existing real estate portfolio, the city or county, has been precluded. The fact that, that we already know, based upon our own internal assessment of our real estate holdings, that we do not currently hold land in our name that would meet this, that would be suitable for this project, correct?
So, one of the big factors is the concentration of nitrogen and phosphorus in the water and the volume of water. Those are the two big factors for where we, we would cite this. And so we, we do, we are going to be looking at city property around those lakes, as I mentioned, as possibility.
The, the reason why I ask, I, I imagine the, the, it, it would be a less intensive search if, if we knew that we had real estate in proximity to this, to where we need to be. So I guess my question is, I mean, we know what we own today.
Correct.
Is there anything that's even from a thumbnail assessment? Pot potentially within the range of, of usability or utility for this project? Our staff would know that. Do, do we, do we own anything there where we need to be? There's a lot of money to look for land. I'm, I'm just curious to, do we know we already own some near it? Anybody?
The, we would, we would, I think the, the important thing is to still look at what's the water quality today. So this was done a couple of years ago. And we did look at city sites in the last time. But we're, we're going to relook at them again to see if, basically, there, there's more nutrients. So.
Got you. The, um, so there, there's.
Do you want to answer more? Okay.
Michelle Wolfhook again, so I just wanted to add to what John said. During the first round of looking for sites, we were very focused on getting something close to Falls Lake. Kind of getting at what Councilmember Rist was talking about. So, we looked at properties that were kind of within a certain mileage distance from the border of Falls Lake. And yes, we did include city properties in those. Some of, actually, most of the city properties didn't meet some other criteria. So this project would go beyond that. So we would be, obviously, Lake Mickey and Little River Reservoir are not really close to Falls Lake. That's a lot further away. So we're going to look a lot farther away this time. And we haven't actually looked at city properties in that kind of boundary. Previously, it was all very close to the lake.
Got you.
Does that answer your question?
Absolutely. Do we have anything, though, that far out? Is, we?
I don't know.
Okay, fair enough. That, that'd be good to know. So there, there could potentially be real estate acquisition needed for this project.
Yes.
And, and in doing an engineering analysis, it wants to cite, because it looks like the, the final report will be keyed in on a particular site. We're not going to get a menu of sites.
Correct.
As I read this report. So, assuming an engineering analysis is done on that site, environmental assessment, and it's something we have to eventually buy, would that, will that involve placing it under contract? Is there authority in this contract to, to contract land? Or if, if we communicate that we're interested in buying the land? I don't want to telegraph to other potential buyers that, that, you know. So I, I guess, once we identify the site, what is the process in terms of us having access to do engineering analysis? And does that require some type of contractual commitment by the city? And is there?
We would have to obviously get permission from the property owners to, for the consultants to go on-site to, to do assessments. The, the acquisition would happen after this contract. So it would not be part of this contract.
No, I, I understand that, but to access the site, we're going to communicate our intent while we're looking.
Yes.
Will that not, will they not, will that not require some type of earnest money? Or some type of, they're just going to let us own out of, out of magnanimity? I'm just curious as to, you know, improving this contract. Once you identify the site, if that's going to be the site ultimately, how do we protect against it getting snatched from us before you get back to us and we say, go ahead and buy it?
That's a good, that's a good question.
Happens every once in a while.
Yeah, we don't have anything in the contract for that right now. The previous contract, anything with acquisition was, was attempted after.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'm just, yeah, and again, a lot of these questions are just, just, you know, from a layperson's point of view, you, you, you get a piece of land, presumably somebody owns it. What, what's the conversation? Hey, we're, we're thinking about buying this. We'd like to come on and dig up and do some work. And, you know, as a city, how, how, how does that conversation happen and what do we do? But I'm excited about the project and these questions, you don't have to answer them. That would, the staff can get back with the details on that. Just a TikTok question, time to, what is, what is the, the date certain for compliance with, with the new rules? I imagine it's years away, yeah.
Yeah, originally it's 2040. That's still, that's still holding. But they're re-examining, so the UNRBA, RBA did a reexamination, submitted a report, as well as the, what's called the NC Collaboratory, which was UNC. And they submitted reports to the state that the state is now reviewing. And so it's currently delayed until they approve that. Or they, they reissue the, the, the new rules.
Okay, cool. And let me just say editorially, thank you for the work. It's a tough thing, where nutrient management's a good thing. The ultimate end is a good thing. But even as we're working to get to a good end, we're still worried about not doing. As we want to save the water, hey, don't poison the water. Don't, so it's, these, these decisions are, are tough. I hope folk that are watching have an appreciation for how nuanced a decision-making process can be. So thank you for the work. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just one more quick question. I know on the slide, it looks like the effluent and influent pipes are pretty, pretty short, right? But what, what are we talking about? Like, what's the sweet spot for the land you're looking at? Like, how far could you run from a cost perspective? Like, the influent and effluent pipes, what are we looking at? A mile, or is it like no more than a quarter mile? What's the?
Uh, I mean, we were, the, in the previous site selection process, we were looking at things that were within, you know, a couple hundred feet. So that's a question for pumping requirements. My, my supervisor, JV, is here. I don't know if you have any thoughts on that? Yeah, so I would say within a couple hundred feet would be ideal.
Thank you. Thank you, all colleagues. Councilmember Cook, you have additional comments?
I actually was going to ask that exact follow-up question. And just curious if we maybe, because I, following what Mayor Protem said, I, I do, it does make me a little anxious if we are kind of out poking on land that's already waterfront, which feels like it might be more valuable anyway. And then with the possibility of the city buying it, I feel like we, we might be looking at a lot more costs there. Though, in thinking about our, the piping that we already do in the city, both for drinking water and, and waste management. I, I know that laying that is expensive and also maintaining that is expensive. And then there's also easements that have to occur. So I don't know if that becomes more cost-effective, but it is an interesting conversation. I, I just wanted to add one more piece, which is that Councilmember Caballero stated that she was just one councilperson. I also am interested in the solar. I think that's a great piece of this, if that could all come together. But I also was thinking about the, I know the intent is to reuse that, reuse the algae and to not have that go to a landfill. And that is like a big priority of mine. But I'm also remembering that we contract for the compost that comes from our water management facility already. And that, that compost is not, we have, we are producing more than the companies are able to use by like a lot. And then this has the possibility for like a lot more of that. And so I just want to make sure that there are some conversations happening between departments about possibilities before we sort of end up adding to that. I mean, it's, it's one thing to say that it's compost, but it's another thing to have it just sitting there not being used. It's not in the landfill, which is better than nothing. But it also, if we can't get it to go anywhere, or if it's going to cost an exuberant amount to go somewhere, that, that's also something I think I'd like to at least balance in a way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I, as I was looking at this initially, and Councilmember Baker actually mentioned that, just the amenities that could come with it. I've mentioned before how Raleigh actually adminizes some of their landfills, where it's like walking trails and parks and things like that. I would be interested in that as well. If you were measuring our compliance with the Falls Lake rules with this, the best-case scenario, how, what percentage of that, those rules and compliance, you think we would actually get to?
Well, it's a hard question to ask, because the new rules are not out yet.
Well, I'm only asking because I, and Councilmember Rist, you may be able to answer this better. When I was at some of the UNRBA meetings, we were talking about Falls Lake. The rules were, the rules were being created or discussed with knowing we were not ever going to be able to meet the actual compliance rate. But we would do our best effort in meeting it. Does that sound about right?
No, I think that's right. So like, so we're trying to revise those Stage Two rules. Because, because we, right, this is what I think Michelle said, we, we know we're not going to be able to meet them. So that, that's part of the process as well. But regardless, like we, we, if we can revise the rules, we would be as part of the UNRBA obliged to do our, our investment on our side to reduce nutrients coming in from, from Durham. And this is what, appears to be one strong way we could do that, so.
Yep.
It is sort of, right, it is in the context of these rules that are not, that are, we're trying to revise them.
Realistic, yeah.
Exactly.
Being revised to be more.
Did I get that right?
Okay, cool. Does that make sense? Is that, are we on?
Yes, this is a big piece of the pie. But there's the South Hill, the Wetland Project. There's other projects that we'll need to, to comply.
Sounds good, okay. And regarding the community engagement, community, public outreach and community, and public outreach and engagement. I know you said it would go on throughout. Do we, like, what does that look like? What, what, what do you imagine that looking like? And what percentage of the budget would go toward that?
That's a good question. You're with me? Yeah, I don't have the actual percentage. The, the total on that is 80, $89,000. The, the total on that is eighty, eighty-nine thousand dollars. So. Yeah, we, we, it will be, they're, they're also going to be developing a social media plan as well. So we will be trying to push this information out from the beginning. There's going to be a kickoff meeting to invite the, the public to attend and we'll have virtual options. We're also going to be putting information out on Facebook and Instagram. And they will be also working closely. We have a staff member that does our community engagement internally, so they'll be working with them. And yeah, there'll be fact sheets that people can read about the project. And then information sessions at different points in the project so that people can ask questions, provide feedback. We're going to do an online survey as well for people that can't attend the meetings that, that want, and questions answered, you know, addressed. That kind of thing.
Thank you.
Yeah, we want to get buy-in from, from the community and where it is going to go, hopefully.
Thank you. So as a fiduciary of the city, this is not necessarily specific to this project, a morsel of practice. Mr. Manager, I'm going to throw you on the spot here, and I know you probably won't be able to answer it because you're like a few days in. But I have to communicate why we're going to end up spending nearly a hundred thousand dollars to do that. And we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars doing that on just about everything we do. And it is really, it's a really hard case to make. And I know sometimes it feels like governments, you know, and weddings are in the same category. It's like, you know, I, I, you know, this sounds really, it can sound ignorant the way I'm saying it or overly simplified, but, you know, people post on social media all the time, you know, or do social media plans, but when it comes to government, it's nearly a hundred K. So I, I, I know that may be oversimplifying it, but it's something that we have to communicate to the public. And we tend to do community engagement longer than we actually do projects. And, you know, we end up getting, you know, this paralysis. And that's something I'm going to start putting a lot more attention on. I, I do think that community engagement and outreach is extremely important. I don't think it should take years. I don't think it should cost a hundred thousand dollars to just answer questions or provide fact sheets. So that's something I think we should definitely look into as a practice in the city. And I'm, I'm almost, and Mr. Manager, I'm, I'm almost to the point of if we're going to continue spending millions in outreach, then why don't we have that as an internal capacity with the city to tackle on each project so that we're not having to rely on external contractors come in, to come into a community that they don't know? So.
Would you like a response?
You know what? I don't need a response, but it's something that I think you and I should probably talk about moving forward.
I, I would say the, the, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. The, the city's approach towards engagement, I believe, has evolved over time in response to, I think, what the staff, what guidance we've received from council as far as expectations on the, the depth and target audience of engagement efforts. I think it's fair to say for a project like this, there is both an element that is true engagement and an element that is more marketing and communications. So perhaps we could be more specific about, you know, what efforts we use to, to get people to come out and talk to us versus those efforts that we use to inform people about what we're doing. And we are happy to be responsive to direction from council about both the length of engagement, how we use engagement. I, I think we want our engagement program to always be responsive to where the council is at. I think certainly there are, I believe we receive a lot of feedback from the community about their expectations around engagement. Frequently, those expectations are probably in excess of, of what we have the capacity to provide. But I think there are definitely strategies that, that we've developed over time that I think have been effective. You know, the, the council does have a blueprint that, that NIS developed and brought forward that really serves as our guiding document. If council would like to revisit that, that is something that, that, you know, is de facto city policy around engagement. And if we wanted to come back and take a look at that and make sure it does reflect council's wishes, and if not, bring options for revising that, I'd be happy to do that.
Do you, could you send me a copy of that? Or send it to the council, rather? I don't know if that the blue, is that the equitable blueprint thing? Green Equity, okay. Yep. Councilmember?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to that because I think Mayor Protem, Councilmember Freeman and I were all on council when that blueprint was created and it, I think it was in 2018, there was a project, I think it was the, well, good Lord, it's been named the Belt Line, Durham Rail Trail, right? It was around that and it was around community feedback that folks had not been engaged with. And at the time, Mayor Schul directed staff very clearly to bring back some kind of blueprint so that departments had a way to engage. And I think at the time, the, the mandate, quite frankly, was 90 days and, and NIS was able to meet that request from, from Mayor Schul and, and council. So I just wanted to provide that institutional knowledge moment just for, for new council members and, and why we, we started there. Happy to have a conversation on, does it need to be updated? What needs to be tweaked or changed? I know the NIS has community engagement ambassadors. Is that a question that we need to? To your point, Mayor Williams, you know, if, if we don't want to contract it out, then is it, do we need to increase their, their capacity to do more? Happy to have those conversations, but wanted to share that for colleagues and the public. Thank you.
What's the plan called again?
I'm sorry, what?
What's the plan called? That's what it is now?
Yeah, Green Equitable Engagement Blueprint.
Yeah. And I'll, and I'll just add, I think I was, I was a very big proponent for making sure that the community is engaged in the process, especially around the Greenway Trail, but also in Third, Fourth Creek. Like, there were a number of projects that the city has conducted that folks felt like they were not involved in nor informed about. And so I do not want us to lose that thread of making sure that folks, and it's not just the people who come to the meetings, it's the people who don't ever come to the meetings, don't even usually know there is a meeting and don't know that the project is happening in their neighborhood. And so just making sure that people don't get lost in that. I, I, I felt like NIS was really helpful in making sure that the resources being essentially the liaisons through the PAC and the districts. And so those five districts have, have, each person is involved and they can make sure that folks are aware and engaged that attend those PAC meetings. But the folks who do not, that's where you get lost. And so always making sure that, you know, there's mailings directly to not just the property owner, but the renter and making sure that there was updates. Because I think when you're, when you're saying things like over a course of the year, like there is a need to go back out because things change in a project. And so you may start with, you know, this project being in near Falls Lake and then it ends up being in a whole nother section of town and you have to do a whole new outreach around it. And I do think that it can be expensive, but it is very necessary. And so those parts I, I'd love to bring to the conversation as well as legacy for why we do it this way. I'm not opposed to having a conversation about updates, but I do think that it's important to continue to do those, do the outreach. I will say that that is where a lot of the language access pieces were put into, like, put into practice and making sure that you were talking to people, not just by speaking in English, but also being culturally aware and culturally sensitive to who you're talking to in the neighborhood and what it means when you're talking about gentrification or all the other things that come up historically with big projects in the city or city or federally or statewide funded projects. And so it was a good tool to have in place. I will say that NIS has been very open to being involved with other departments and I'm hoping that other departments are using that, that resource.
Thank you all for that commentary. I, I wanted to revisit the conversation because I thought that you can do a significant amount of community engagement within 90 days. And that's what this document says. I have not seen that in several projects. It's been years. And we've seen requests for extensions. And so I, I think it's just probably a matter of holding, you know, just a matter of fidelity to what our policies are.
But I think that's what I'm starting to say, is that the 90 days might be where you're starting, but if there are updates, changes, like that becomes a whole nother round of outreach and engagement. It's like, as long as the project is running years, there's going to be years of engagement.
I, I, no, I get it. I, I think what I want to make sure is not happening is if we are outsourcing this, it's not being abused. And that, that's my main concern. We, we have to communicate while we're spending a million dollars sometimes, you know, not a million, that's in design, but if we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on community engagement while asking for affordable housing, we have to make sense of these arguments, why they're all necessary, if there are ways that we could actually make it more efficient. And I would, yeah.
Thank you. I look forward to having that conversation as a council. I think it is time. We have also moved in a, in different ways and in better ways than 2018. I think that was the initial moment. I, I would say that PB has been, which we're about to get a presentation about that. We've also moved to having community conversations every fall. So we are doing other things that, that had not either kicked off or were not being done at all in 2018. Yeah, than we were in that moment. And so I'm happy to have that conversation when, when we have it. Thank you.
I would just say that I, I do want to make sure we're careful because I do think that often folks have a, a tendency to underestimate what it takes to do that type of outreach. And so if you say it's a hundred thousand dollars for a million dollar project, you're talking about 10%. And I do think that it's worth 10%.
Got it, yeah.
Yeah, thanks, colleagues. And, and thank you, Councilmember Caballero, for your, your historical context on, when this kind of got kicked off. To, to his honor's point, I, I think, you know, I mean, we're all elected officials. So community outreach and engagement are like our bread and butter. I mean, we, we should be doing that all the time and, and it's a pure and it's a noble concept. I think to his honor's point is that we have seen a cottage industry kind of grow up around it. I mean, if you're in your car, every five minutes you hear these tax help commercials, right? You know, if you're buying your taxes, we'll help you and, and when, you know, you've got to professionalize the service. And, and there has been a, a professional service industry that has grown up in here. And I think it, it, you know, it behooves us to kind of look at how we're spending the money because I, I don't know how many projects I've voted on that had community engagement and inevitably somebody shows up and still say, I ain't know. You know, the, well, you didn't, you didn't contact us and after we spent a couple hundred thousand dollars. So there's always that. To Councilmember Caballero's point, with, with PB, I think is, is a great initiative. The qualitative difference, however, is those people are actually voting. That community engagement is actually leading to, to actually concrete results that they are, you know, democratically choosing. Whereas I've oftentimes found that, you know, community engagement, when we ultimately make a decision, if the decision's on the opposite side of what you wanted, then the community engagement failed. Because there's an expectation that community engagement is going to have a causal and direct effect on the outcome. Many people read community engagement as, we're going to do exactly what you told us to do. And that's not always the case. You know, it's an informed decision, it's a nexus of, of conversations that inform the decision. So I'm sensitive to, to what the mayor's saying because I have watched, you know, it get pretty lucrative and we still get pummeled for not doing community engagement when we should be doing it as elected officials to begin with. So I look forward to the conversation as well. Obviously, we're all pro-community engagement. That's how we got our jobs on this dais. But, but I think it's worth looking at and, and perhaps revisiting the, the structure and anatomy around it, particularly when it comes to spending money. So I thank his honor for, for at least bringing up the subject and thank you all for your, you know, your historical perspective on it as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Are we going to go ahead and set aside some time on our future agenda to talk about community engagement? It sounds like an issue that we're sort of off topic here, but it sounds like an issue with, with a lot of interest. I have a lot to say, but I'd rather say it in, in a forum where we're actually focused on community engagement. Is that something we can do?
We can work on that. I can take lead on getting some time to talk about it. I'll work with you, Carmen. All right. Well, are there any more questions for your topic? Sorry about that.
No problem.
I do have one final question.
I started out with, not your project specifically, but did you put on?
I do have a question for council. Is, is there, would it, would it serve us well to have some type of, of apparatus in place or, or, I mean, since they're going to be bringing us back a singular parcel for us to consideration, is there a way that we can lock that down via contract? And I, I know sometimes you got to put up earnest money or whatever, but, but I'm, I'm curious as to how the conversation goes. We're going to have a public conversation about a piece of land that could be pretty lucrative and folk are going to be listening to us, talk about a piece of land that we might be potentially spending millions of dollars on that we have not locked down yet. And I mean, if I were a speculator and I was, you know, listening to the conversation and I had a few million lying around, I'd go buy it and make you come talk to me. So I'm wondering is, if, can we, if the council's amenable to it and if you have any counsel or, or recommendation, what can we do to protect ourselves during that deliberative process when they identify this piece of land and bring it back to us that we have no legal claims on at that point? Is there any way we can protect ourselves or lock it down?
Like some sort of option? Is that what you're asking, Mayor Protem? I'd need to discuss that with real estate council and also with the real estate staff to figure out what tools are available to us. I can't answer that here.
Sure.
But certainly that's also the purposes of closed session. You also have opportunities to discuss issues in closed session when you are obtaining real property as well. So we, we can talk about that.
Cool. Thank you so much. All right. Yeah. Well, we just talked about it in open now. Yeah, so they, they know we shopping now. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all for your time.
You're out of the hot seat. No more people.
Thanks for your interest.
All right. Next up. Item number 10, participatory budgeting cycle for launch state update. Hello and welcome. We're trying not to be so long-winded on this one. You have more slots than the last one. All right. All right. I'm not going to say anything on this one. Okay, I take that back. I take that back. Good afternoon. Welcome. And you can tilt it down if you need to.
Yes, thank you. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Mayor, Mayor Protem and members of council, my name is Carmen Ortiz and I am the Community Development Manager overseeing PB. And I'm here to make a presentation with my colleague, Fallon Thompson, and we're here to update you on our PB cycle for launch. All right, perfect. And so before we get started, PB is really a team effort and so I always like to highlight my team before we get started. And so here we start with Andrew Holland. He's our Assistant Budget Director over the Office of Performance and Innovation.
He has a lot more hair now, right?
He has a lot more hair and a lot older, yes. I am too. That, that's why I recently changed my photo. And so Andrew joined us back in 2018 when we launched our first cycle of PB. And you already know my name, I'm Carmen Ortiz. And as I've mentioned, just like Andrew, I joined the city back in 2018 when we started our first cycle of participatory budgeting. And I have the privilege to lead and work alongside the most amazing team in the city. It's one thing I love to brag about. And Fallon Thompson, our Senior Budget Engagement Analyst, joined PB back in '22, right before we launched our third cycle of PB. However, she's been with the city for nine years and she's faithful. And Louise Bean and Cameron Brown just recently joined us. We are super excited to have them both on board. They bring so much talent and skill and experience that we're just so excited to have them and see their contributions to PB. And Kara Matthews will be joining us in two weeks from now, so we're pretty eager to have her join us and she's going to be focusing on design. All right. And so today we are, as I've mentioned, we're here to talk about PB. What is PB? How it works? Why PB matters? We'll briefly touch on our previous cycles and then we'll go over the details of our PB cycle for launch that we're super excited about. And then I'll ask, you know, I'll And then I'll ask, uh, you know, I'll answer any questions that you may have. All right. So PB, uh, what is participatory budgeting? It is a, uh, it was a process that was first developed in Brazil in 1989. And there are now 1,500 PB programs around the world. Um, it is a democratic process in which community members get to decide together how to spend part of their public budget. It allows residents to come together, to identify, discuss, and really come together and make decisions about public spending. And so as I've mentioned, PB has been implemented in cities and counties across, um, the state. Durham PB was, uh, PB was actually, sorry, sorry. Durham was the second, uh, city to bring PB in the state of North Carolina. And Maclinburg County or Charlotte, um, just launched their, um, first cycle of PB. Two fun facts that we learned, uh, very recently, we're super excited about. Um, with the first one, as I've mentioned, PB is, um, also in schools. A group of students at Carolina Friends School were inspired by our first cycle of PB back in 2018. Then they went back to their school, put a proposal to bring PB into their schools. And so administration loved the idea and approved their proposal. And, you know, granted them a yearly budget of $1,500 for them to have a student PB program. And they're now in their fourth cycle. So we were super excited to go back in the fall and see what they're doing. Another fun fact that we recently learned that we're super excited about was the city of Richmond just launched, uh, their first cycle of PB this fall of 2024. And we've had conversations with them over the last couple of years. Um, they've done a lot of research, meeting with cities across the country. And we're excited to learn that they decided to mirror a lot of what Durham PB is doing. I was just so proud of our team and the work happening in Durham that they decided to mirror, um, the PB Durham PB cycle. Um, and so I've mentioned, um, there are many different PB programs around the world. And while there are slight differences, obviously from city to county to schools, there are sort of, uh, general themes that, uh, have in common. With the first one is sort of being an idea collection or, or a process where residents come and share the ideas of how they would like to see the funds implemented. Then the next stage is after these proposals are, uh, brought in by residents, residents and city staff work together to vet these ideas. Durham specifically vets, uh, the proposals, uh, for feasibility, equity and impact with the proposals moving on, going into a ballot. These proposals are then voted by residents and the winning projects will then be implemented by the city. We then go into the next phase, which is to analyze and evaluate our current, uh, process and then prepare and reflect for the next cycle. Now, why does PB matter? So PB is, is a very unique program because it's not a program that just goes to the community to ask questions. We engage residents throughout the entire process, going from submitting ideas to working together, to working together to develop these ideas to see, are they feasible? Are they not feasible? What potential impact they have in our community through the voting process where, again, we work with residents to help us, you know, speak to their neighbors, speak to the residents and get support for these projects, ideas that they've worked hard for. Through also the implementation process, you know, one thing that we love doing is as projects are being implemented, is going back to the community to celebrate, you know, their hard work, um, during this process. And it's PB Durham specifically has a goal to implement projects within the two-year timeframe, which is pretty exciting because residents get to see the fruition of their hard work as projects are implemented. So it's one thing that we're really proud here in Durham in compared to other cities that are, you know, 10 years behind project implementation. That's one thing that's pretty special and unique to Durham. And then another thing is, uh, through the proposal development phase, we engage residents for about, you know, 12 weeks. And so during this time, residents get to work with our technical departments, with us, and really get to learn, um, you know, how city operates, what is feasible, what is not feasible. They get to learn about project costs, which is one of the things that we hear when we go back to the community. I had no idea a sidewalk is this so expensive or why it's so hard to build these certain things.
That was my first concern.
That's, that's the most common thing when we go, but you know, when we speak back to delegates, they actually, you know, share with community members. Like you have no idea how expensive it is to build certain things. This is why, you know, the city can't do everything we ask right away. And so I think that's what, one of the neatest things about PB that residents, um, learn and then they go and speak to other residents and sort of inform them things that otherwise they wouldn't know. And then finally, through, um, their experience in the proposal development, they're able to build skills and advocate for their communities and continue to be engaged in other various capacities. And through that, um, you know, we increase, uh, civic engagement. We build strong relationships between residents and city staff in the city. And we see residents come together and, and make decisions that are important for their communities. And so here, um, what we see is a PB scope for Durham. And so as I've mentioned, we fund one-time capital projects that include physical infrastructure, technological improvements or communal enhancements. And traditionally, uh, we've had a $2.4 million budget that is, uh, applied citywide. And any Durham resident or student 13 years or older can participate. And, uh, what you see here are our past cycles. And so I've mentioned, we're launching our, our fourth cycle of PB. And so these here are our past cycles. And so our first cycle, as I've mentioned, was 2018 when we have gathered over 500 ideas and 10,000 resident votes. Our second cycle was a little bit different. We were in the middle of a pandemic. So our council approved a million dollars to support those most impacted by the pandemic. In our most recent cycle, PB cycle three, um, we've gathered over 700 ideas and over 12,000 resident votes. Um, and here are just a sample of the things that have been funded. And so PB Durham funds, um, capital projects. It's the way we like to say to residents, think about something you can buy, you can build, or you can upgrade. Um, and so here are some samples of things that PB Durham has funded in the past. We've added ADA equipment to a playground. We've added bicycle pump tracks, street trees, um, lighting at parks. It's also a very popular one. We've added security cameras, um, sidewalk improvements, sustainable improvements to parks. And so these are among, um, the most popular projects submitted over the, you know, the hundreds of projects that have been submitted by residents. And here are just some highlights from our most recent cycle, PB cycle three. And so as I've mentioned, we've, um, collected over 700 ideas. Um, our budget delegate, it's a committee of 25 volunteer residents, vetted over 260 proposals that they reviewed and worked on. And we've gathered over 12,000 votes with about 2,800 of those being from Durham Public School students. All right. And so, uh, for the last few months, we've been working with our PB steering committee. Our PB steering committee is a committee of 15 volunteer residents. This is a great diverse group of residents, um, including two students that oversee the implementation and design of PB. And so we, uh, had a retreat in the fall when we sort of got together and started designing and having conversations on what they want to focus during PB cycle four. So some of the other things that our PB steering committee does is they oversee the design and implementation, um, to ensure it aligns with council priorities. They also participate in various trainings, including equity, uh, data management and facilitation. And this is because they do a lot of sort of the engagement. They go to the, to the community to hear firsthand what are the concerns of the residents. They also participate in, uh, different events. And so as I've mentioned, they also go to the community to hear firsthand the concerns and voices of the residents. And so they are also part of different committees. So our PB steering committee, um, has three committees. The first one is communications, outreach and evaluation. And lastly, um, they work, they function as a self-governing group, um, who make decisions through a majority vote. All right. And here are the three goals that were worked on and voted by our PB steering committee for us to focus during our PB cycle four. And so the first one is to engage DURMS, to engage DURMS diverse population and increase participation for those who face barriers or are excluded from traditional government budgeting decision-making process. The second goal was to implement projects that are impactful, equitable and benefit the most underserved communities in Durham. And third, uh, to provide an avenue for residents to engage with city staff and resource building long-term relationships through meaningful engagement. All right. And Fallon is going to take on, take it over.
Sorry for the change in the guard. Okay. We are going to shift a little bit and focus on equity. Our PB steering committee continues to, um, want to have a strong focus with equity by upholding the PB cycle three goal of having 60% of the project, the collected project ideas and projects implemented to come from a specific geographic area identified during equity lens. The categories we will again focus on are areas that have a high percentage of people of color, areas that have a household incomes that are $40,000 and below, and areas that have a high percent of residents taking public transit to work. You may remember that in PB cycle three, we had over 70% of the projects fall within the criteria set by our equity map that I'm discussing here. To also help us, uh, determine the equity of our proposals that Carmen talked about for our proposal development phase, we want to focus on quantitative data to identify undeserved neighborhoods, income, transit ridership and areas that may be food deserts. We also want to determine how to, uh, make our proposals impactful. And we're going to use qualitative analysis to do that. We'll ask such questions as, how does this proposal provide a missing resource in the area? Or does it serve a citywide population despite its location? Moving on, as we prepare for PB cycle four, one of our main goals is to create spaces for meaningful engagement. To support this, we piloted PB mock sessions in legacy neighborhoods, including one for youth. The goal of the mock, the PB mock session was to create a space where residents could better understand PB and how the city functions, so they could be better informed when brainstorming ideas. During the mock sessions, residents had discussions with other community members and learned how to develop realistic project ideas that are feasible and impactful. Okay. We are excited to share a few of our timeline for PB cycle four. We plan to launch this spring with idea collection. Uh, we will start proposal development, May, June of this year, with community engagement happening in August, September. We plan to start voting in October and be ready for council approval of the winning projects in January, February of 2026. Our PB steering committee has set an ambitious goal for PB cycle four, to get 14,000 votes. Our primary goal is to hear from our target populations, which are Durham's most underserved and underrepresented residents. For cycle four, again, we want to incorporate evaluation through each phase of PB. And we will partner with our Department of Equity and Inclusion to continue to strengthen the equity in our processes. We will again partner with our innovation team here at the city to continue improving our efficiency and effectiveness. Let's talk a little bit about some research from PB cycle three. During PB cycle three, we worked with that innovation team and the Duke Center for Advanced Hindsight to develop a survey about the impact of PB. The survey asked the series of questions of how, um, such as how does having the opportunity to vote in PB affect residents' trust and, and attitudes towards government? The survey method was launched online and randomly asked some respondents about trust, fairness, transparency and budgeting. So we want to share a little bit of the results from that study. We learned that those who were prompted to vote in PB feel more positively about their local government and feel more strongly that they have input into decision-making. Those who were prompted to vote in PB were more likely to vote in upcoming elections. And those who were prompted to vote in TB have higher trust in governments, especially local government. So like Carmen said before, PB matters. That's our presentation for today. We are available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Much, colleagues.
Um, I'll be really brief. I just want to say thank you to your team. Y'all have done such excellent work. And also a big shout out to the volunteers. That is a, a really big lift for residents. And so, um, we really appreciate it. I know that this program really wouldn't work without their input. So a big thank you to, to folks who have put time and effort into this. I was just hoping that you had just said the goal and I just missed it and I don't see it on the.
14,000 votes for PB.
14,000. Okay. Thank you. That, that's a big jump, but.
It's a scary one.
Okay. Okay. I feel like we could do it.
We can. We could definitely.
I'm not going to say we, y'all have been working hard. Y'all can do it. Um, those are all my questions. Thank you so much for this presentation.
Thank you.
Real briefly, just, uh, ditto. Uh, thank you so much for all your work. Really appreciate it. You all have done, you have shown the results here, done fantastic, uh, work and, um, good luck with the next round.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to shout out the whole PB team. I've been going to y'all's meetings on and off for many years now. And to the steering committee, both the current and previous ones, every, every cycle gets better. The votes increase. And I think the, the biggest impact to me, for me is, um, I often go out into community events during voting. And I love when the youth-focused ones, uh, invite us out. And so, uh, I will say, having had lots of conversations with youth in front of their ballots about which, which projects to pick or if they have questions, that is, um, one of, uh, the best parts of being a city council member. And so, uh, I look forward to being in all the high schools. And I know kids votes often has a thing, uh, student U has had things in the past. And so, uh, in the fall, which is great because it'll be a municipal election. It, it does actually, uh, help folks understand how local government works. I've had, uh, conversations with people who were, people who submitted proposals and it, it, it is a, there's not a lot of positive right now. And this is one of the things that is really, really positive and, um, something that Durham has done well. And I do want to also thank my, uh, former colleague, city council member, Julian Johnson, because she is the, um, council member who brought this idea forward.
Thank you.
Thank you so much to the PB team, uh, on the side as well. Yeah. Really appreciate the presentation. Yeah. I am so proud that Durham is one of the leading innovators in this space. And so we again want to thank you on behalf of the newer members of the council. Excited about this and also want to really appreciate our colleagues who came before us. Some who are here, some who are no longer in council, who are the ones that brought this forward and made this happen in Durham. So it's exciting stuff and want to thank you so much.
Thank you.
Freeman, did you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, colleagues. Let me make my colleagues commendations. You built quite the dream team down in that shop.
We are, we are.
Absolutely.
I brag about that all the time.
Awesome. And, uh, like, you know, in, in Durham fashion, other cities, municipalities take note of what we're doing. PB, whether it's PB or guaranteed income or the heart team, other folk tend to, to gravitate towards Durham and, and want to emulate, uh, what we're doing here. So congratulations on a really, really great, uh, job. I do want to ask a couple of questions because I, um, this, there's been a sea change in our country and in our state. And some of my work outside of the council has me in conversations. And initiatives like these have been, I'm having more and more conversations like these. Uh, uh, more and more conversations about initiatives like these around our state, um, and sea change and how folk are, are looking at them and scrutinizing them. So I, I want to ask you a question regarding the equity, um, piece. It says that the steering committee established a goal for 60% of collected projects, uh, project ideas and implemented projects to come from specific geographic areas identified through an equity lens. So in a one-person, one-vote situation where nobody's vote is weighted, how do you get 60% from a particular area without spending more time in that area as opposed to other areas? Or do you somehow, um, curate the number of ideas that are collected to skew to a particular area? How do you operationalize that?
Sure. So that really comes to play during the proposal development phase. And so, um, you know, we obviously, uh, ask all residents in the city of Durham to submit their ideas. We put our boots in the ground. That means this is where we physically go into the communities that are underserved. So we put a lot of emphasis in these communities so that we ensure we hear from these residents. Now, uh, this really takes play in the proposal development phase when our budget delegates are vetting all these ideas. And so budget delegates, uh, work on developing, you know, scoring for feasibility. And so obviously that, that question is, is this project feasible? Can the city implement this project? And so all the projects that move forward on the feasibility, then they get scored for impact and equity. And so our budget delegates, um, have a form that they complete where they look at, you know, where are the communities of color? Where are the, you know, incomes below 40,000? Where are their students? Where are their food deserts? And so when our budget delegates are scoring these projects, there is a rating. So if it falls in, for example, a community of color, there is a higher, you know, score. Or if it's, you know, a community where there is a hundred thousand dollar medium income versus a 20 or $40,000, there is a higher score on that. And so that is how, um, that's sort of vetted. And then there's an, there's an impact form that they work on. And so they ask questions. For example, um, you know, what is the potential impact this project has in a community? You know, the, some of the other questions are, is, you know, if, if this resource is available. So for example, um, it's a playground, you know, in certain.
You know, in certain communities, there are playgrounds, but they're, you know, they're old, they're not in good conditions, so there's higher scores. And so, the projects that have the higher scores advance to the ballot. Now, so as we've mentioned, the goal is for at least 60%. And so, some projects, for example, we had in the previous ballot was a skateboard. That did not have a really high ranking on, you know, sort of equity per se because of the location, but that really had, there was a lot of students in that area and a lot of student support. And so, when we also look at, you know, the potential impact of these projects, you know, who is going to impact? Are there a lot of students who have this need? And so, this is where some of those projects that may not score as high on sort of equity specifically, but make it into the project. And so, that's how, you know, equity is sort of balanced during. Does that answer your question?
It does, and it's helpful. And like in our MWBE work, we're not allowed to set quotas. We can have goals. And those goals have to be met in kind of an organic, natural fashion. And it sounds like that. And the reason why I asked specifically about how are you reaching that goal? Because it sounds like there's some operationalized weighting going on.
Yes, there is.
We need to be prepared to answer those questions and defend that moving forward. The actual weighting of one neighborhood as opposed to another neighborhood, particularly since we're spending municipal dollars. That's something that we're going to have to be prepared to. And I'm saying this as the same team, not...
Right, no, absolutely. It makes sense. It definitely makes sense.
Yeah, in preparation for us. I remember the first iteration, and this now, the demographic breakdown on ideas collected, do you have the demographic breakdown of who actually voted?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Just give me one second. Let's see, combined. So, let's see. Is this it, raise? So, let's see. I just wanted to watch. So, yeah, so we have combined. So, we had about 22%. Give me one second. Just want to make sure I have this clear. So, for our online voters, we had 66% of our online voters were white. Then, for our black voters was 16%, and our Hispanic voters were 5%. And so, those were our online voters. Our paper voters were very different. Those were, I should be here somewhere. And so, for our combined, when we combined the entire data, it was, let's see. Give me one second. That's not there, online.
You're saying combining the online and the paper ballots, yeah?
We had them combined and separate. So, our paper ballots, let's see. So, our paper ballots, the data was, we had 34% were black. Then, it was 32% Latinos and 14% was mixed. So, the majority of our online voters were white with over 66%. And then, in our paper ballot, it was the opposite. The majority of our votes were people of color, with 66% being people of color.
What percentage of your total votes were online of the entire voting universe?
It was about half. I think I have it here on the presentation, actually. So, it was about, a little bit under half were online.
So, of your total votes, period, a little bit under half were online?
Yes. So, out of the 12,000 votes, we had 41% were online. The other ones were paper ballots, including 2,800 from students.
Were your, would, now, there are three wards, obviously. Were your polling stations in pursuit of the 60% goal, were they more heavily, where there's a, how, would you say they were evenly distributed throughout the city? Or did you have more opportunities? Because you said you had boots on the ground in areas that were geographically identified. But boots on, so the opportunity for getting more votes in person, paper votes, would be higher in those areas where your boots were. Is that a fair comparison?
Yeah, so it's very different. For our online voters, we use all of our different platforms. And so, you know, we, very quickly, we had those 6,000 votes. These were the residents that, you know, got the survey or the voting ballot through our social media, through, you know, the communication channels, through different marketing, you know, opportunities we sent out there. So, those were pretty easy to get, right? Those just, you know, came up really quickly. The harder ones were obviously going to, you know, hearing from the underserved residents. And so, what we did, we were, you know, every day at the Durham Bus Station. We were at the Department of Health and Human Services. We were at basically every event in the city. We did door knocking. We did a lot of different, you know, we went to a lot of events that were happening in the fall. Especially, you know, one of the great things was, you know, Latinx, you know, my Heritage Month. So, we went to all those events. And so, what our team did, we were at the different, you know, small conveniences stores where residents naturally go.
With physical ballots, and you were actually...
With physical ballots, yes.
In those areas, okay.
And the big difference with, just to sort of touch why we had a paper ballot. Paper ballot is a lot easier for residents to just, you know, fill. And so, one of the things that was very important for us was security, ensuring that each person can only vote once. And so, in order to vote online, you needed to sort of, you know, enter a phone and information so you can get a code, so that we know each resident only had one vote. Versus in paper, we went, you know, we also went to the Durham jail. And so, we were able to get, you know, about 230 people at the jail to vote. And so, a lot of these people didn't have telephone numbers, didn't have email. And so, when we went to the Durham Bus Station, there were a lot of homeless people who would not have a cell phone or an email to confirm. And so, with them, we did a paper ballot together.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate that. That's very helpful. And again, the conversations I'm having, I just need to be able to talk about with certainty that the methodological nuances we're using to reach our goals, because there are folk looking for, with a high degree of scrutiny. Final question about statistical methodology. Those who were prompted to vote in PB are more likely to vote in upcoming elections. How did you determine that?
Yes, so, Lindsay, she worked on this, so she can answer more of those questions.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Lindsay Gavin. I manage the I-team in the Office of Performance and Innovation with PB. So, the way that we did this study that has kind of those three or four points that Fallon mentioned, one of them being intention to vote, I should clarify, that is a stated intention to vote. So, we did not poll the voter rolls and compare them with PB voter rolls. But the way that we did this study was, as you can imagine, it's kind of hard to do a randomized control trial for PB because you can't deny half of the potential voting population the ability to vote in PB. So, what we did was, we launched a survey that is, that was about government trust. People went into that survey, and then, half of those people were prompted first to vote in PB and then to answer all of these questions. The other half just answered all of the questions. So, we're almost using that prompt to vote, if they hadn't voted already, as a proxy for exposure to PB versus the control group, if that makes sense.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. I, given the way voting, our voting trends are currently, so 66% of white folk who voted online, you can't determine how many of them were asked, were they going to vote in the next election? You don't have that breakdown as opposed to getting the, right. Okay, all right. Magnificent work. Again, this is a jewel in our crown in the city. And I'm prayerful that we'll be able to continue when I'm molested and I'm bothered by folk who don't understand our ways here in Durham. But thank you so much for your point. Thank you for answering my question.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you all. And our final item is Vision Zero.
Good afternoon, Sean Egan. I'm the Director of Transportation. So, responding to the question that Councilmember Rist asked at the January 6th City Council meeting about the status of the completion of the Vision Zero Action Plan. So, I want to start by saying, we certainly appreciate the sense of urgency to move forward with this work. As Councilmember Rist pointed out in that January 6th meeting, in the first six days of 2025, we've had two people killed on our streets. So, if we're going to cut traffic fatalities in half by 2035 and get to zero by 2045, which is what this council committed to in June of last year, we've got to get fatalities down to less than once a month. So, having two in one week to start 2025 is a really troubling trend for us to be starting out on. So, we certainly understand and appreciate the sense of urgency. So, one of the biggest pieces of the City of Durham Vision Zero Action Plan is what we call the High Injury Network. So, that's looking at the crash history across our cities. From 2017 to 2023, we have reports of about 55,000 crashes. Of those, more than 350 resulted in a serious injury and 170 resulted in a fatality. So, what the High Injury Network analysis does is it maps out, where did all these crashes happen? 55,000 crashes. And then, what are the areas where we've seen the most incidence of serious injuries and fatalities on our roadway network? So, as you can imagine, compiling all that, mapping all that for 55,000 crashes was a big undertaking. We worked in partnership with the Durham Chapel Hill-Carboro Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is doing similar High Injury Network analysis for other municipalities in its planning area. So, the benefit of working with the MPO is that we get a consistent collection and analysis and formatting with our neighbors, other jurisdictions in the MPO. So, the MPO board can get an apples-to-apples comparison of what's happening with injuries and fatalities across the planning region. But there's also the benefit of 80% of the cost of that analysis can be applied to federal grants. Whereas, the work that we're doing is 100% locally funded with our staff. So, we worked with the MPO. We had set an initial target of October of 2024 for that High Injury Network data analysis to be completed. It was not completed until December. So, the good news is that now that we have that High Injury Network analysis completed, we're moving forward with finalizing the Vision Zero Action Plan. And we're right now doing final consultations with key stakeholders that we've partnered with on this work. So, we have our Vision Zero Working Group, which includes designated staff from 10 city departments. This initiative cannot be a transportation-only initiative. It really requires, for us to be successful in this work, it requires partnership, collaboration, sharing of the workload and responsibility for these actions across city departments. And that's why we want to make sure that we're getting that review from the Vision Zero Working Group across 10 city departments. We have a coalition that includes partner organizations and community members, such as Durham Public Schools, the Durham County Partnership for a Healthy Durham, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, Bike Durham, and others. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission got a presentation, actually, on Tuesday night, on the 21st. It's available on the city's YouTube channel right now. Lauren Grove, our Vision Zero Coordinator, did a great job presenting kind of where we are with all of the analysis and what's been compiled to date. So, a big part of that work is now that we've done the full analysis of the High Injury Network, when you exclude highways like 8540, 147 from the analysis, and the city does not play a decision-making role on those limited-access highways. So, when you exclude those from the analysis, 11% of Durham's roads account for 74% of traffic deaths and serious injuries. So, 11% of roadways, 74% of deaths and serious injuries. So, that 11% effectively is our High Injury Network. That is where we have the greatest opportunity to improve safety and eliminate fatalities and serious injuries from our roadway. So, really, that's going to be a focus and really guide this work. We also have some key actions identified, which are updating the Unified Development Ordinance, developing a street design manual, conducting road safety audits, implementing QuickBuild safety treatments, developing a speed management plan, and creating reporting mechanisms to share traffic safety data and insights. So, all of this is now being finalized with input from our stakeholders. We look forward to bringing the final action plan with all of the richness of data as well as detail behind each of the actions that will come forward. We look forward to bringing that at the March 20th work session for City Council review and approval. And so, that's the interim update that we have right now. I'm happy to take any questions.
I'd like to jump in. So, first of all, thank you, Sean. Really appreciate that. Appreciate the sense of urgency on this. I guess my, I mean, I look forward to the final report coming in March. It's great we're going to have that. I guess, as I look at, and I guess you didn't bring the BPEC slides here today. They're, yeah.
No, the presentation and all that is available online. I just focused on the memo that was in your agenda packet.
I'm just looking at those right now. So, I guess my question is, you know, a lot of the Vision Zero theory is that it's not about individual behavior, sort of like structuring things so people aren't getting hurt, right? As I saw the data, a lot of these crashes are happening at intersections, right? Many four-lane roads or more, right? So, it's not smaller roads, it's bigger roads.
So, we see the disproportionate share of multilane roadways, so more than one lane in each direction, as well as higher-speed roadways. So, both of those are significantly overrepresented in the High Injury Network.
So, I guess from the recommendations, so it seems like a lot of what we need is we've got to rebuild these intersection roads, or maybe not re-engineer how we do this, right? How pedestrians and bicyclists interface or interact with cars on the roads? So, how much of this is sort of changes in sort of street design manuals and so forth? And, you know, speed limits, I think, is part of it. How much of it is simply like redesigning stuff that we have to do?
So, we really need to...
Hard engineering, right?
We need to continue the type of work that we've been doing through the resurfacing program, where every time a roadway is being resurfaced, whether it's an NC DOT roadway, whether it's for a water management project or one of the public works, resurfacing for city streets, we use that as an opportunity to improve safety and in many cases, changing the design of the roadway. So, on Irwin Road, for example, narrowing the travel lanes, adding a buffered bike lane, adding vertical protection in the bike lane. But we also added leading pedestrian intervals at the crosswalks near the hospital, because it's one of the highest pedestrian activity areas in Durham is at Duke Hospital and the VA there. So, every one of those resurfacings needs to be an opportunity. But we also will need greater resources for some of those things like QuickBuild, like pavement markings and signposts are relatively low-cost. We have higher-cost interventions that are needed to change the design of roadways like Mangum and Roxborough, Duke and Gregson. So, those are going to require not just the types of analysis and the resources for QuickBuild, but they're going to require much more intensive resources for new traffic signals, reconfiguring intersections as you talk. reconfiguring intersections, as you talked about. So all of that work is going to require a greater commitment of financial resources than we've been able to bring forward to this point.
So just on the phone, actually, yesterday with DPR folks. And coincidentally, one of the new hires in DPR comes from New Jersey and has worked with Hoboken, which is getting a lot of attention nationally, is one of the cities that's.
It got to zero.
It got to zero, right, yeah. And she said a big part of that is like what's called like daylighting intersections, right? So how much of that is part of, is going to be part of our plan, daylighting those intersections?
So intersections are going to be an area of focus. So making sure that cars aren't parked too close to the intersection. When cars are parked too close to the intersection, it makes it really hard to see whether there are pedestrians or even other cars approaching or entering that intersection. So making sure that we're providing sufficient space at those intersections, particularly those intersections that have seen high numbers of crashes, serious injuries, and fatalities. So those are, those are actions that we can do relatively quickly with things like a no-parking sign and pavement markings. So that's going to be critical. But we're also seeing a high number of incidents from vehicles running off the road, for example. So there's not as simple of a quick-build, especially running off the road at, at high speeds. So I think the vehicle that ran off the road on Austin Avenue near the North Carolina Central Law School was going over 70 miles an hour. Yeah, and ran off the road. So those, there are guardrails and other things that can be effective treatments there, but they're more intensive treatments. But those have to be part of the analysis as well. And then we're going to be looking at left-turn crashes. So we're seeing a lot of crashes that involve a left-turning movement at an intersection. So we, we're not going to meet the aggressive goals that we have to cut fatalities and serious injuries in half. If we just focus on one of those crash types, whether it's intersections, run-off-the-road, left-turn movements, we've got to focus on all of them. But we really have to make sure that, and that's why the High Injury Network allows us to really bring detailed analysis to that 11% that's driving.
I'm actually looking at the map there. It's, the map I see is pretty confusing. I'm sure there's much more granular detail there. But I guess of those, of those 11%, where 74% of the injuries happen, I'm guessing that this is not a surprise. I'm sure there's all in, like, a lot of quarters we probably know well, right? I guess my question is, of those 11%, how much, like, how much of those 11%, how many have like sidewalks, bike paths? Is it, like, what's the, what's the condition look like in those 11%? Is it, is it going to take a whole lot of work? Or are those already, do those already have some enhancements that are pedestrian or bike-friendly?
They have some enhancements, but a lot of them, where they have a sidewalk, like NC 98 going out toward the Antioch Baptist Church, for example. So there's a sidewalk right in front of the church, but then if you walk a block to the east, there's a sidewalk gap and you can see the dirt path. So that area of Holloway is a high crash. That's part of our High Injury Network. So there is sidewalk there, but there's not a complete sidewalk network there. So it's going to be a mix of different treatments that are needed. Fortunately, we have the resources with the Bond Referendum to complete that segment of sidewalk network. That's one of the Bond projects, is to complete along Holloway there. So it's, it's going to take collaboration with bringing, bringing to bear those resources as well, and looking at those projects as opportunities. But those, as I think this council knows, sidewalk projects take years and years and years to do. So with the action plan, with the kind of reductions that we want, that we need to make in the near term, we need to be setting the table with things like the Bond Projects for delivery over the next several years. But we really need to look at examples like Hoboken and Alexandria, Virginia, where there were some quick-build implementation changes. Things, some, some of the things, like even the frequency of how frequently you see a speed limit sign. There's some research that shows if they're spaced closer together and you're seeing more speed limit signs, then it can actually reduce the average speeds in a corridor. So putting up a speed limit sign is something we can do pretty quickly. So we're, we're going to need to look at interventions that are effective, that are being implemented in that High Injury Network. So not every neighborhood in Durham is going to get the kind of focus with this work. So most neighborhoods fall outside of the High Injury Network. So I think that's something that we need to be clear with residents as we're communicating this. We need to focus on the places where people are dying on a regular basis. And that may not be your neighborhood. And so, but that's where, if we're going to get a 50% reduction and get to zero like Hoboken and Alexandria have, that's the work that needs to happen.
Great, thanks. I really appreciate the focus on this, the data-driven aspect of it. And I look forward to continuing conversations about this. Thanks, thanks to Lauren as well for her work, so, thank you.
Any other comments? All right.
I was looking for the, you know, transportation tie, didn't see it.
All right, thank you, colleagues.
He tried to catch him slipping.
Thank you, thank you for that. Colleagues, I, I really appreciate our focus on Vision Zero for transportation. As I've said before, I think that it'll be very beneficial for us to take this, took a similar approach for gun violence in the city as well. So I'm going to really put some attention to that. I'm already putting attention to it, and I plan to bring that before the council. And I would hope that I would get your same energy. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I was just going to add, it would be really good to hear, I guess. I don't, I'm going to miss the legislative conversation, but it'd be good to hear what they think about that kind of Vision Zero look for the state and advocating for the daylight or daylighting of the curbs. I know in California, they just passed it. I'm looking forward to seeing what the data looks like there. But I think statewide, we need more support for Vision Zero to actually work and.
For transportation.
For transportation specifically. But it's not, it's not lost on me that the dollars we use to focus on it now could be used to address gun violence. And so if we could get more state support on addressing our Vision Zero needs, especially on state roads, with the stated, like, the stated comment, I think you said it a number of times, at 11%? Yeah, so.
Oh, no.
If that's where the problem is, that it's on more state roads, I do want to make sure that that point is made to our state legislators, that they need to push in and make sure that we're getting state support for addressing our Vision Zero needs. And then we can move more dollars.
I don't think it's sharing the dollars between gun violence and traffic. I think it's we committing to the same, we making that just as much a priority. This is more values than, than dollars, so.
I don't have that problem. My value is high. My neighborhood's pretty gun violent.
All right.
Yeah, we got the money. I mean, we, we, we could do both. This is, this is a matter of, I think, will and philosophy as well, understanding. But let, be clear, we just heard a wonderful presentation on, you know, how we are using two-point-whatever million dollars for participatory budgeting. We got money. We got cash here. It's just a matter, we can do both. It's not either or. So I want to associate myself also with, with the mayor's concern. I'll yield in a minute. I do, I do want to. I'll yield. Do want to associate myself with the mayor's concern that, that we lean in as much. We have a salaried employee whose job is to think about zero fatalities on the road, notwithstanding whether it was caused by a drunk driver or irresponsible bike rider. We're not even parsing that. We've just said, whatever the cause, we want it to be zero. And we, somebody's getting benefits in the salary, well-deserved for that effort. And I think we, we need to bring the same energy to gun violence in our city. So, thank you. I'll yield.
I was just going to just note, I think previously, the gentleman who was here earlier, Dennis Garrett, has shared a proposal that would, would have essentially tried to address the gun violence needs in our community in a very holistic way with an organization called Advanced Peace. And I know that the district attorney has also addressed it and mentioned the same resource. And so hopefully, we'll have a chance to look at that. I know that we have not previously agreed to move forward with it, but maybe it becomes a part of this conversation. And I do know that folks in our community are trying to figure out what, what it is that needs to be done. And I know that this Advanced Peace model has worked in a number of other communities. It takes funding and it takes the support of more than just the council. So I do want to make sure that, I, I just want to add into it that there are folks who have made proposals, and it does take funding, and it takes us to make that decision. So, thank you.
If I might, there have been council members that have made proposals as well, and funding's been given and funding's been taken away of certain things. And I don't, you know, it, I don't, it'd be nice if Mr. Garrett had an actual employee, maybe a Gun Violence Zero Coordinator, that he could submit his proposal to. But Bike Durham and other groups have a person on salary that they can submit their proposals to, which I think indicates our serious commitment to this issue. We have no person on our, unless you want to talk about a police chief or whatever, or EMS folks. So we have, yeah, we have first responders and emergency responders. But, you know, there have been a lot of proposals brought before the council over the years. Some of them, depending upon the work of the council, get taken up and funded, and others don't. Some of them, if they have appropriate amounts of listservs connected to them and activists who show up, get funded, and others don't. I think it's instructive that when, when folk were given the chance through PB in some of these communities to vote on something, they voted on security cameras. The people asked for security cameras, not through listservs, but through PB. Thought it was an interesting juxtaposition what PB brought to the fore, what I think sometimes on the dais we've missed. And as far as I'm concerned, a, a video camera is the internationally recognized symbol of surveillance. And one of the biggest arguments we have in the city is about increased surveillance. Well, guess what? When we asked the people what they wanted, they chose the number-one instrument for surveillance. Cameras don't call police. They don't send ambulances. All they do is record. And what we do is the next morning, we get up and watch the video of you getting shot, so it can go viral. We didn't say help while it happened, but we got high-resolution pictures of it happening. They chose that.
I appreciate that. I, I think it would really be a great use of the time to figure out if we would like to move forward with some options. I think the innovative team or the innovative office would be really helpful in, in helping us figure that out.
Thank you.
I don't know if we need any.
Colleagues, I think we know where we all own this. Any other comments on Vision Zero? If not, I am going to bring us to, to close up the agenda. Mr. Manager, you have anything? Adam Clark, the note, we do that in the beginning. Those are all of the items I have here.
You ready to settle?
Yep, I am.
To settle the agenda, I have items one through nine and item 14 on consent. And on GBA, public hearing, we have items 11 through 13.
Thank you. All right.
Move to settle?
It's been moved and probably seconded. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you all so much. We are adjourned at 3:44.